So we're looking for a really good day. And we will have food trucks for our employee picnic, and Eli's will be one of them. So we also want to acknowledge him for helping us with that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Teresa.
Mayor, I'm most likely not going to get another opportunity, but Teresa and the United Committee have worked really hard on it in Service Day. And I'm really proud of the event that they're going to put together for us.
Very good. Okay, and speaking of employees, we want to celebrate the recognition of our 2022 National Public Works Week. And I'll turn that over to Commissioner Franny.
So I assume Paul, maybe Russell? Everybody else? Russell's coming. I saw water and wastewater is in here, so.
Backbone of the city, right here.
Backbone of the city.
There you go.
I mean, as you guys come up, I mean, it's true. If you don't have good infrastructure, water, wastewater, flush your toilet, it doesn't matter about good Mardi Gras. It just doesn't. It just doesn't. So you guys, you guys, you provide the base that's critical.
Jorge, get on up here. What are you doing up?
So I also get the honor, the first time I think I did a retroactive declaration. National Public Works Week, May 15th to 21st, 2022, Ready and Resilient. Now, look, I'm looking at you guys, and you look ready and resilient. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Dunedin. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are federally mandated first responders, and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Dunedin to gain knowledge of, and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, now therefore, I'm Maureen Mo-Franny, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the city of Dunedin, Florida, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do retroactively designate, May 15th to 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens everywhere to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Look out, look out.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you very much. This year's theme for National Public Works Week, as Commissioner Franny said, was Ready and Resilient, a theme which resonates with Dunedin's public work staff and professionals on a daily basis, and especially as we head into hurricane season. Always ready to serve the communities, and always resilient, as ever, and the abilities to pick themselves up off the ground after encountering challenges. The Ready and Resilient theme highlights the ability of these professionals to perform regular public works duties, and be ready at a moment's notice to react as first responders during the, during natural disasters and overcome trials seen in the field. The public works motto is First to Respond, Last to Leave. Public works employees keep communities strong by providing infrastructure of services and transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater treatment, public buildings and spaces, emergency management, and our first responders, solid waste, and right-of-way management. They are what make our communities great places to live and work. Join us in celebrating these fine folks.
I always say this, and I'm going to say it again. Thirty-five years ago, when I was a young staff, we're starting in Dunedin, we were not taking care of all of our infrastructure. Water and wastewater were a disaster and were a crisis. And so when you lived through that, as I know many citizens out there did, you recognize that really, without you guys taking care of our basic infrastructure, really, I mean, all joking aside, it doesn't matter. That's the most important function we do. So I want to thank you on behalf of all the commission.
Thank you, guys. Okay, now it's time for citizen input. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak to any item that's not already on the agenda? Please feel free to do so. Jennifer, I think George was going to come up today. Now the time for that.
George.
Kinney?
Yeah, we're, the lien amnesty.
Oh, gotcha. Sorry.
That's all right.
Didn't put those two things together. How I didn't, I don't know.
It's quite all right.
All right, consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes of 4:21, 5:03, and board and committee appointments for Board of Finance, Causeway, Committee of Marina Advisory, and Stormwater. We have an amended and restated parking lease agreement. We have the bid for Jerry Lake Parking Lot. Any items to be pulled?
Mayor, can I pull 2C?
The parking lease? Okay. The lease, not the lot.
I'm sorry, the lease.
Gotcha. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the other items?
Second.
By Smear and Commissioner Franny. Thank you all. In favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, did you just have a question, or?
Yeah, just wanted to talk about the price of the new lease, and just in general, what are the cost of the parking downtown is.
Certainly Bob Meyersmith, Economic Development Director. Yeah, before you today, obviously, was amended and restated parking lease. This is on the Ocean Optics site that we refer to, the corner of Douglas and Main. We had a previous lease there with Arless. The property has been recently purchased, and we wanted to continue the lease. But Commissioner, basically, all the, we have several parking leases. They're all a little bit different rates depended on. Is it improved surface? Is it shell? Does it have longevity? Is it month-to-month? That type of thing. So I don't know if I answered your question. I'm sorry, I might.
Well, I just think that we spend a lot of money on parking for residents and visitors. So I think it's important that they know what all this is costing us.
Certainly, Commissioner, we spend a quarter of a million dollars, approximately $250,000 annually on parking lot leases in the downtown, which includes the parking garage, as others too.
Okay, all right.
If that answers your question.
It does, but also just to acknowledge with this lease, and the fact that it's Ocean Optics, this is month-to-month. Because I know that's the big conversation in the city is what's going to happen to Ocean Optics. And I don't want the residents to be comforted by a lease to imply that, okay, for X number of years, it won't be developed.
Yes, Commissioner, absolutely. It's month-to-month. The new owner, we had some very preliminary dialogue, myself and Community Development Director George Kinney, and Assistant Director Joy De Pasco. So this is month-to-month. Obviously, he has an approval process that he will go through. We felt that it was still extremely important as a central location, but certainly that was one of the reasons staff brought and the Commissioner approved to acquire the Douglas Scotland property, to preserve parking options here for future in a central location. But yeah, it's always hard when temporary lots do go away here in the future, but we need to accommodate for that.
And that was $250,000?
Yeah, approximately, a quarter of a million. Yeah. It's a pretty big position by the Community Development Agency, obviously, to continue. Thank you very much. That was all. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Franny and Commissioner Gao, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to action items. We have Resolution 2216, revising and reinstating the city lien amnesty program and including a review of the first-year program statistics. I think I'll go ahead and hold off on the reading.
Sure.
In case anybody wants to make a change, we don't have to try to fight that battle through motion. Okay, George, Julie, welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, George Kinney, on behalf of the Community Development Department. I'm very pleased this morning, if I can take a few minutes before we get into the presentation, to introduce you to our new code-compliant supervisor, Ms. Julie Phillips, who is sitting here to my right. Julie comes to us from Clearwater with more than 25 years of experience. She's held positions in a training capacity from a code standpoint, and also as a supervisor for a long time. So we're very pleased to have her here. And I just kind of wanted to introduce you to her, because eventually she'll be taking over this lien amnesty program. So, and I wanted her to kind of see that process, so.
Don't look so joyful, George. You're looking so joyful about that.
I know.
I love it. When she came back the second day, I was, you should have seen my face.
I love it. Well, welcome, Julie. We're excited to have you with us. Welcome to the city.
So with that, I'd like to do, is the PowerPoint up? I don't see it on your screen. I've got it up on my laptop here.
It's up on my Zoom. It's not up there. There you go.
Okay. So thank you, Commissioners, again. If you recall, in May of last year, the City Commission approved Resolution 2109, implementing the inaugural lien amnesty program for the city. That approval included a request to review the program one year later. And accordingly, staff has maintained a database throughout this first year to kind of give you some statistics as far as that first-year program success, in my opinion. It's gone very well. And right after that initial resolution was approved, we sent out over 100 mailers to people with outstanding lien applications, advising them of the program. Over the past year, we have received actually more than 42 inquiries at this point, with 26 cases coming forward, as you'll see as part of this. It's actually a little bit more than that. When this was loaded, we've had two or three that have come in since. But I'll kind of show you the progress of those 26. So again, program began under Resolution 2109. This is a consistent provision with the Calvin G. Ordano Assessment Report. If you all recall, that was done in 2019. This was one of the recommendations that came out of that report. And again, the City Commission did request to review the first-year progress. So this is going to be way too difficult to see. The point of seeing this slide is there were 26 cases considered over the course of the year. That top section of cases are all cases that were dismissed with the assistance of Nikki's office through the lien amnesty program because of foreclosure issues. In other words, the liens were not enforceable. But they did go through the program, and we were able to clean them off the books, which I think is very important. That second clump in the middle are projects that were, or liens that were dismissed in total or in part, based on the evaluation matrix that's in the current resolution and proposed resolution. And then there's a few other items, categories in there. There were two that were dismissed based on financial hardship, and there were two that were actually title misses, title insurance misses. So, and those folks recovered their funding from the title insurance companies. So very, very, so it's had a kind of an array of aspects to it, and they've all been, I think, tremendously successful to this point. This simply just kind of shows the property addresses and the release percentage. Typically, they're around 80% to 100%, and I'll walk through the matrix in the next slide, just so you can see how that works. But again, you'll see a lot of full releases because of foreclosure issues, but you'll also see the ones that we utilize and reviewed using the current matrix. And this is that matrix. So if you recall, embedded in the resolution, if you've got a lien, let's say, of $100,000, and that lien was considered minor, you automatically qualify for 50% off of that $100,000. If the time to come into compliance for that particular item was less than six months, then you qualify for an additional 30% off of that lien possibility. And then previous code violations, if you're, if you had no previous case history, then you can qualify for the 20%, giving you a full 100% release of that lien. Typically, that's not what happens. It's typically around 50%, 60%, 70%, but we've, again, with tremendous success, because people are loving the fact that they don't have to pay the full freight. And the important piece, obviously, is not only are we getting these off the books, but we're getting code-compliant properties as a result, obviously, because we don't process these without the property being code-compliant. So I do have, and the reason this is an action item today is I do have a, I would like to replace the inaugural resolution with this second resolution. Resolution, and I forget the number off the top of my head.
2016.
2016, thank you, Rebecca. And the only changes that we actually have in that resolution, again, with Nikki's assistance, we were able to kind of just make a couple of clarifying changes. The first being clarifying Section 2G, and that's that matrix that I just showed you, the no previous history matrix provision for applicability to only those cases that proceeded to the Code Enforcement Board. So, and that's the way we've interpreted it over the last year, but we just wanted to make that clear. So in other words, if somebody has been code-enforced more recently, we don't penalize that person unless that case elevated itself to the Code Enforcement Board. So in other words, if they resolved it within the timeframe provided by the code-compliance officers, then we've reviewed that in their favor. The second section is amending Sections 2A2 and 2K to permit payment at the time of transfer if part of a negotiated agreement. And the reason for that is, you may recall the Resnick Circle case that we brought not too long ago. In that particular case, the applicants have requested to make a payment at the time of sale of the property. And this would offer us the ability to do that, if we, if it was part of a negotiating agreement, and we could collect that payment at the time of sale. So those are the two suggested changes. In summary, city staff finds the program creates an efficient process for the reduction, release, and/or disposition of liens brought by previous code-compliance and code-enforceable board actions. And we are recommending that the lien amnesty program be extended. And I'm happy to answer any questions with that.
Thank you, George. Mo? Might as well get it out of the way. Oh, hail Mo.
Can you go back to the edits, the, or, I'm sorry, the changes, proposed changes? So not those that were readily corrected, falling in notice by the inspector. So I already think we're giving a lot of leeway. So I'm just trying to look for, I guess I'm asking both of you. Like, what if I'm somebody who literally, like, has had, I'm going to be extreme. I'll admit it right now, like, 10 different violations, but they've corrected them right away. But they're on everybody's radar, as there's always something from that house. Basically, they, is that, would that be typical, or am I making a really extreme case?
Yeah, we, I mean, we wouldn't.
I'm just looking for loopholes. We're already given a lot. I don't want to give too much, because we already gave too much on our limits, in my opinion, so.
The great thing is, Commissioner, if you all recall, you recently approved our civil citation process too. So we would be looking to possibly other methods, if that was the case, if we're getting into repeat issues. To me, this is really about clearing that lien that's elevated to the point of acquiring a significant penalty over a period of time. So we're, they're kind of, they're used together, but I don't, we don't typically run into a situation here where we've got somebody that gets an enforcement notice, and if they correct it right away, that they're, no, sometimes we'll get people that maybe want to play a game and do, maybe come back with the same issue. But 10 different ones, I, it's, I've not seen anything quite like that.
I mean, my philosophy, my goal, just me, is I don't want to give forgiveness to anybody who's a current multiple violator. And I don't want to give them a loophole. So I just don't want this to be a loophole. And I don't want to give somebody forgiveness who's, you know, currently got a, you know, has not, has, really has multiple other violations. So you guys feel like the words readily corrected means that they're not. They're in good faith, and this is why you're recommending this.
I believe so. And that's how we've interpreted it over the course of this year. Certainly, if we find a problem, I think we could bring it back to you all. But, you know, you can't, you can't even enter into this process without having clean hands. So your property in essence has to be code-compliant all the way around, whether it's a.
And we physically inspect that prior to forgiving.
We do. We do, Julie.
I've heard good things about you, Julie, so.
Yeah.
I know you're on it. It's good.
So yes, we're comfortable with it. And again, I feel like that civil citation process kind of gives us another angle. So we can, those fines will just come in the form of that graduated, that graduated fee structure that was approved as part of that process. So I think we have it, I think we have it covered. But certainly, if an issue arises, you know, we'll work through Jennifer to bring that back to you.
I'm trusting you guys that we're not just, you know, making a process for Bill to go through. We're like living the philosophy of it, right? That you really do have clean hands.
Yes.
Philosophy, you have clean hands, and, because I don't want to give anybody, you know, forgiveness that doesn't. But that's good. The other thing, I had a question about the foreclosure ones that we, maybe we can go back to that matrix. Not that one, the one that has the actuals right there. So how do we, how does that work with the foreclosure ones? Do we just, if it comes up for time of sale, somebody just says, hey, it's non-enforceable anyway, so just do away with it? Or what do we do? Is there a process? Do we know they're in compliance?
I know Nikki will want to jump in, but we require the application. Once the application comes in, there's a justification page on that application, and a lot of times, this could be one property removed.
So they still have to go through all the application process?
So we, there's no charge for the application.
That's how these came to our, that's how these were brought to our attention, was through the application process.
Okay, so even if they're a foreclosure potential, we don't just forgive them? They have to go through application?
And forgiven is probably a better word for that second block of approved reductions that you have pursuant to your resolution. I would call everything in that first category as having been extinguished by a court order. So essentially, if the city has a lien, that depending on the timing of when the lien is filed, and when the foreclosure sale happens, the court has already entered an order saying that those, that the city's lien is extinguished. Why those were still on the city's books as to that property and other issues, I'm not sure, or whether they determine we're going to keep them running against other potential assets of the violator, although by the time, you know, again, the ultimate goal is compliance, not collection against the violator for several.
That's exactly why they did it. That's exactly why it's still on the books, is for future properties.
But so, so when people would petition and say, hey, I believe, and some of them, they are now three or four owners past the foreclosure sale, hey, I just found out when I got this letter that this is even still on your books, but it went through a foreclosure. We would look at each individual case, and there's a memorandum to Jennifer and her team going through the court documents for each and every single one of those items on the list. There's a separate memorandum. So each of them may have had a different element. Some of them, the city was joined in the foreclosure, because the city's lien was previously recorded, and they were joined in the foreclosure and then extinguished by the foreclosure. Some of them, the city wasn't joined, but Florida law operates under a provision including a lis pendens, which is a Latin term, meaning that someone can file it. And anything that is recorded after that point in time could be extinguished by the foreclosure. So with those two operations of law, those items on the top of that list are, they're liens on paper, but the court has already determined them to be unenforceable by the foreclosure. And I'll look to George to say, I know on each of those individual properties since then, I mean, the other information that the, that the property owners would submit was how, you know, that pool wasn't even there anymore. They had done a rehabilitation project that, you know, redid their backyard. And so these were also not issues with properties with ongoing violations in any instance. In fact, in many of those, if the, if the, if the compliance was not achieved by the time the foreclosure sale would happen, what we would see is then code-compliance opening a case to bring against the bank that now own the property. And banks generally want to get them cleaned up pretty quickly so that they can turn them and sell them for, you know, to monetize that asset. But the, so that's the, that's the process there. And I hope that gives you some background and insight into that first column.
Okay, thank you.
A quick funny story. One of these properties, and I won't mention the name, is a city employee who's owned the property, two people removed from a foreclosure. So very, and very happy that we were able to get that taken care of.
And it probably, you know, they haven't probably run into it, because a title company will look at that. They'll see the recorded foreclosure judgment, and it won't even necessarily pop up. But the, you know, that's because it doesn't really exist anymore as to that property. And then if, you know, the city wants to make a determination that appliance has been achieved at this, so therefore, the ultimate goal has been achieved for this property, then that's, that's the, that's, they were also only partial releases that are recorded, so documenting that, even though belt and suspenders within the record for that property, but it's a partial lease that's recorded as to that property only.
Got it, got it. That's all my questions. I mean, I'm 100% believer in the program. George, you know, I'm, I also, I want it to be forgiveness earned. So other than that, I think it's great. I mean, it's really doing right by the people, I think, that want to do right and clean up the property. So, thank you.
Can I just ask a question based on what you asked?
Sure.
Nikki, I do believe all those things were on the books because of going after future properties, or having the ability to go after properties that that person owned somewhere else. Is there any reason why we need to be continuing to do that?
Depends on what your ultimate, you know.
Goal is.
The ultimate goal of code enforcement should be achieving compliance on the properties. If compliance has been achieved, yes, you could take these liens and continue to go after the violators for collection. But again, what goal is that aimed at? Then that's, that's a, that's a goal aimed at collection and revenue. It's not really a goal aimed at compliance, which has been, which has been achieved.
No, I get it. But that's why I wanted to ask.
But you could argue, right? If you've got somebody that owns 10 properties, and they're a violator, one's gone, it's cleaned up, or am I talking about two different things?
Well.
This is a homestead, this is, or fore.
Homestead properties, it's a fictitious lien anyway.
Right, right, okay.
But.
But this could be anybody. This could be somebody who owns 10 properties in city Dunedin, and we've cleaned up one, and he's got nine others.
Or she. But yes.
I thought that, but the one I'm thinking of is a he, so.
But the, but, I mean, yes, that's if you, if you would like to go after and pursue those and track that, and track asset searches, and do that, there are entire industries that will do collections.
Okay.
And that's a, and that's an option that the city can pursue. Like I mentioned, all of the releases that have been recorded on these are partial as to the property only. They were initiated by current property owners who are living there, who have, the violations are long gone. And so the idea was to allow those property owners to have the comfort to understand that the city was not declaring them to be responsible for the lien that existed still on the city's books on their property after it had been extinguished by foreclosure, and the violation's no longer presented.
And I think, if I may add, that the program doesn't prohibit us from going after someone who has multiple violations.
So in the process, you'd look at it?
It would be a discussion that I would have with George.
So that's part of the application process?
No, thank you for that, because I was going to ask you that. Like, you guys can do that. You'll see that and say, wait, we are going to, this is, this is a problem, and we're not going to just let it go.
The liens still run, yeah, then the liens still run personally. And then that's the other thing, too, is in, in subsection 3, which is no longer up on the screen, when staff's looking at previous code violations under the resolution that you all, you know, have had in place for the last year, they're looking at not, at no previous violations by the Code Board on this property or other properties. And they're looking at that comprehensively. So I think that's the, that's the other, that's the other check in terms of the goals that you're seeking to accomplish by the amnesty resolution.
Very good.
No, that's great. And that was a great add-on, because, because for me, it's all about the bad actors, right? And we've had so many good actors, and this is what this is about, and that's why I'm in favor of it. But we have some bad actors, and I don't want them to, you know, slide through the.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Twang, any questions or comments?
I have comments as well, okay. So I appreciate the presentation. There's another sheet that'll be coming that adds, adds a little bit more. But I saw a lot of Nikki's hands all over some of this. And in conversation with the, with the city manager, I came to the conclusion that this is really working well, and that she still has, and you still have, and we still have the ability to accomplish some of what was just talked about here. So I thought that was great, that we have that flexibility. So although it sounds automatic, it's not necessarily automatic. You can't, you can't continue to be a bad actor. But we are trying to clean it up. And as was just pointed out by the city attorney, some of this was almost automatic anyway. So I was, I was real pleased about the conversation and the results. So that's a comment that I had, and I appreciate the work that went into this, because I was, I was one of those back in 2020 that was looking at this and saying, wow, this is getting way too big, way huge, and wasn't sure why, and wasn't sure what was really still good, and what the goals were. I think I now understand the goals better, and I trust, therefore then, I think I now understand the goals better and I trust therefore then you certainly do understand the goals. And, and again, it's compliance. And we're not, we're not after, it's not just the money that we're after, we're after the compliance. And I think we accomplished that with this. So thank you, everybody. Thank you for all you got, you guys did.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes. Okay, Jennifer, again, I, I did want to ask this question. If someone comes to you and says, you know, we would like to clear this, clear this title, we would like to clean up this lien, and say we have, you know, this financial hardship, whatever, and you look at it first and you say, well, we don't believe this meets the criteria, then where is the appeal? Where do they take any appeal for that?
You.
Right.
Okay.
So the, the city commission owns the liens essentially, so those appeals would come to the city commission. Do you want to talk to that, George, about, a little bit about the process?
Trying to remember if the appeals go to.
No, they, they, they come to the city commission. If anyone disagrees with the.
Staff conclusion?
This, yeah, the city manager's threshold determination. The applicant may file a written appeal with the city manager within 15 calendar days of the city manager's issuance.
Yeah, and I believe that is embedded in the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, here it is. I'm sorry. Paragraph F is the appeal. So the city manager or designated terms that one or more above the status threshold criteria plus requests goes on, and then it says.
Yeah, but this does, this may have been a holdover from the, the civil citation system, but this says BOA.
It does say BAA.
And it needs to go, it need, this should say city commission.
So that's what I was getting confused about because my understanding is that the civil.
Civil citation goes to.
Citation goes to BAA, and that was not clear.
Actually, it goes to a BAA or a magistrate.
Or, or.
No, I believe there was a purpose for that. And I, you know, it's slipping my mind at the moment, but there was, there was, that was thought out and I, I don't recall the reason why, but.
It might have been, if I can interject, sorry to interrupt you. I could tell you, we didn't want to be up here making these determinations either. And we, we, we said very strongly that we did not want to be making.
I think that, that.
We've always said that. We have always said, we don't want, you know, crying grandma standing before us.
It was discussed up here.
It's a lien waiver. To another city board and some donated.
I know, but when they say no, they can say to us. And we said, we didn't want to be the, the person, the arbiter of that.
It's not that, I mean, it's your criteria, so I understand. But yes, I, you can send that to the BAA, you can send it to any other city official. You can't externally send it. So that may have been that discussion. So you can't send it, for example, to say, we're going to outsource, we're going to say if there's an appeal, it's going to a collection agency that can work out a deal and then come back with it. That's, that's an unconstitutional delegation. But you can send it to the Board of Adjustment Appeals, or you can send it to the, some communities send it back to the code compliance board.
No, I, I know that's the case. I do, because I recall presenting to the BAA as soon as, right after this was adopted to let them know that they.
Do you remember? Is that what we said?
Yes.
Because I, I know we were very uncomfortable, because we've had that happen, you know, where they've come before us and they're, you know.
Correct, but, but I think you need to, it was a little confusing to me. Does it come back to the commission on Jennifer and the proper, if they had a denial, then it comes to us or goes to the BAA? I mean, I think that.
So the resolution itself is clear, it goes to the Board of Adjustment Appeals.
Okay.
So.
And it's been that way the whole time?
Right. And apparently, last time, the city commission assigned that to the BAA, so BOA. So I'm, I'm fine with that if, if you assign.
The part that I was, sorry, the part that I was misstating is that if it's above the city manager's threshold, it does need to come to you for approval.
Yes, that, that's normal.
That's the one.
That's normal.
Those, and those are the only ones that you've seen are requests that exceed the threshold. We haven't had any appeals of any denials.
That makes sense.
Exceed the threshold, it goes to the commission, but if it.
An appeal of a denial, it goes to the Board of Appeals.
Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Thank you, Jesus.
That's good.
I'm good enough.
Glad we hashed that out.
Okay, now I have another question. I was really interested, what?
No, I was just saying she was right. And, you know, I never like to say that, but she was right.
I know you do. All hail Mo.
I just like what clarity. And I was getting confused on that.
Yes, well, we were confusing.
We were, I was getting confused. Okay, the second thing is, how does it work with a, a title insurance company? I, I noticed some of these. Okay, so a title insurance company, when someone else is trying to purchase a property, one of the things they're supposed to do is it's supposed, they're supposed to sort of target whether there are any liens on that property. If they miss it, then we don't get involved per se. It's more of a private action between the new purchaser and that title company that missed some very important information. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
That's a good summary. And actually, I think there were one or two that the city got paid from the title company.
Yeah, we got the check from the title.
So it was a settlement, but it was between those parties?
Wasn't a settlement. The title, the title company paid off the lien in full because they missed the recorded lien.
Okay.
So the city got paid, the property owner still had their, you know, and, and the title company was responsible for missing the recorded memorandum.
And I understand we're cleaning off the books. I'm still a little leery. I'm just, I mean, I'm worried because if it comes to the level of health, safety and welfare, and I please know that maybe I'm scrambling here with, you know, scrambling different allegories, but, because I do believe in giving people forgiveness when they have a financial hardship, they really are trying, you know, things can happen. But in health, safety and welfare, I, I just want to be very sure that whatever our process is, that it's a 162 or whatever, you know, it's under Florida statutes 162. Health, safety and welfare is different than cut grass, motor, you know, boats and yards, defunct cars or whatever you call them, derelict cars. I mean, there's a difference between something that's really, you know, black pools, stuff that could really, really end up in a tragic situation.
Yeah, I mean, all I can say, Vice Mayor, is, you know, this program is intended for people with, they're coming into it with clean hands.
Yeah.
So.
And that's, that is a very good point. They're coming into this with clean hands, but.
But we have other programs, as you know, that are under Julie's direction that will, you know, would target those types of, types of issues.
And that is the.
Whether it's chapter 162, civil citation.
Code Enforcement Board.
And the Code Enforcement Board.
Well, and, and also, the matrix addresses the gravity of the violation between major and minor as well.
Minor and severe. So those were, those were some of my questions. I just wanted to be very, have clarity on those issues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Your Vice Mayor. Commissioner?
Uh, no, the questions have been asked.
Yeah, whoever the heck you are.
Whoever I am.
All hail Deborah.
Ask and answer.
Asked and answered.
Okay. I don't have any questions yet.
Oh, good.
Good. Okay, this is a public meeting. Anybody wishing to come forward and wish to speak to this item, please feel free to do so. Seeing or hearing none. Nikki, would you please read the Resolution 2216 by title only?
Yes, Mayor. A resolution, Resolution 2216, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dunedin, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute and record release of lien or partial release of code compliance liens upon full payment of the lien, full payment of the amount reduced by the city commission or otherwise required by law. Authorizing the city manager to consider any applications for reduction of code compliance liens and make recommendations to the city commission, providing criteria to be followed when considering applications for reduction of liens. Authorizing the city manager to approve code compliance lien reductions of up to $50,000. Repealing Resolution 2109, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This has been reading of Resolution 2216 by title only. And we made the title pretty general to try to give you all some, some flexibility in, in reviewing, so.
Thank you. Motion to approve, please.
So.
Second.
Commissioner Franny and Commissioner Tauranga. Any final comments from anyone?
I just had one question. The other things that we've done on code, and I know Julie's just getting her feet wet quickly though, again, as I hear. But when would we expect to kind of have a overview of how those things are going?
So the, the amnesty program, we promised we'd bring you after a year. So that's why you had, saw just the program. Let me, if you don't mind, work with George and Julie to figure out when we can bring you a more comprehensive report on where we are from.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, and I know we're just trying to get, get our.
And we'll be available in that process too, as you know, so.
Yeah.
And as we talked about during budget time, they're working on the short-term rentals now.
Yes.
And that, that's going to be an important.
It's huge.
Yeah, okay. Any other final comments from anyone? Great job, everybody. All right. Yep, we'll call the. Commissioner Cowell.
Yeah, good idea.
Vice Mayor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Tauranga.
Aye.
Commissioner Franny.
Aye.
Mayor Frichelsky. Oh, sorry, aye. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Nice to meet, nice to see you, Julie. Okay, now we have the Florida League of Cities Legislative Policy Committee sign up. Rebecca gave us a copy of what everybody signed up for last year. Do we have signups for this year? And I'll just, I'll start with Vice Mayor.
Well, I, I would still, if I was going to do it, but I, I was still doing the environmental, the natural resources. But, you know, I'll be out of office on November 21st and the final meeting is December 1st.
Oh, I see.
So you see, I'm not sure, I don't want to waste the city's money. You see what I mean?
Gotcha.
So I don't know.
All right, well, why don't we leave you till the end?
Okay.
And see whatever else wants to do.
I have an idea for that. I have an idea about that.
Commissioner Cowell?
Last year was my first year on the transportation, intergovernmental relations. I'm, I'm still getting my feet wet with that. I'm on PSTA. And so it just seems to me it's a, it's a good fit for me to stay.
Okay. Commissioner Franny?
So I looked at the dates. You know, I've obviously, I've been on land use and economic development for quite a few years, but I looked at the dates. And, and I do now, because sometimes they can just not fit well in your schedule and, and you, and you don't, you only get three shots at it and usually the first one's the most important. But, so two of the three dates, I have family, I have four family weddings, like between the summer and the fall, like they're killing us after COVID. And two of them are September 16th and October 7th, I mean, that, that weekend. So I would not be able to attend those. So it doesn't make sense, I think, for me to sign up for that.
Okay.
However, if you signed up for environmental and did the first two, then maybe I can take your spot for the December 1st if they let us co-team.
So which one am I going to now?
If you're doing environmental.
Economic, or am I going to environmental?
You said you wanted environmental.
Well, that's what, but I've always liked yours myself, so maybe if you're not going to take that economic, because that has.
Yeah, I, I mean, it would be solely because the two meetings, the first two are the most important meetings. And, and I won't be able to attend them.
And you'll be able to talk after she's out of office.
Yeah, and I can, and then I can fill in your slot at the very last meeting.
Do you, you don't see any issues with that, right?
It won't be there at the same time?
No, we wouldn't, except she would take, I could take everything up to, I could take three, right? When is the November meeting?
Well, December 1st is the last.
The last one, but I mean, there's one in Novem.
I, I think that's the actual, isn't that the actual?
What are the actual dates?
Well, but the other question is, would they let you come on December 1st even though you're not still elected? Since you've basically done the first two meetings? I mean, that's probably the first question.
Oh, that, there's three meetings. What, what are the meetings?
Maybe I'm just complicating it, Jennifer. I'm just thinking like, you know, I can't do.
You've got written down three. Is there three or four?
There's three meetings. The, September 16th, October 7th and December 1st.
One, one more time?
September 16th, October 7th and December 1st. And again, it doesn't make sense for me to be a representative for, you know, because I will absolutely not be able to do the first two because of the family wedding issue. Because there, I think they're both, they're Fridays.
And all these meetings for, are the same dates for all the committees?
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
But there's, there's two and then there's the last one. I thought there were three and then, but I don't know. Well, actually.
Well, December 1st is the third.
All right, so why don't we do this? I mean, y'all look into it.
Yeah, can we look?
So let's, let's, so that's an option, is what you're saying? Okay. Commissioner Tauranga, what, what did you want to?
I, I'm fine to stay right where I am. I've been there one year.
Municipal administration?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so are we doing, are you two going to go after land use and economic development or the, the environmental one?
The medias meetings are the beginning ones, so pick what you want.
You want to stay on this one then?
I'll stay on utilities. I'll go to the first two meetings.
And to support that, I would say, at least the last time on land use, I mean, we struggled to find a big priority.
Okay.
Because of course, you know, there's been a lot of them in the past.
Utilities, natural resources.
But.
CRAs, yeah.
We struggled, so.
So go ahead and.
So utilities, okay. So, you know, listen, we just appoint her and in the end, we just say we're selling, sending a proxy.
They just say, well, she's out of office.
We're sending a proxy.
Yeah.
Right.
I can't imagine they're going to say no.
And because there won't be.
That doesn't make sense.
And I can't, I can't serve at this point.
There won't be two on the, you know, there wouldn't be two on the same committee, so we would not be breaking any kind of sunshine.
Right.
Issues.
And, and Mayor, if we can.
Yes.
I just, now that leaves land use and economic development without a body attached to it. And I think there's a strong correlation between land use and transportation and economic And I think there's a strong correlation between land use and transportation and economic development. If there's any way feasible, can I take both of those, or is that?
I don't think you can.
I think they meet at the same time.
No, they meet at the same time.
They meet at the same time.
You know what? I, I do have an idea. I have seen, like, for in my, uh, in my environmental, when there is something that they, you really feel that you need that knowledge, sometimes they send a staff member. A staff member attends that. I mean, it's somebody.
Well, they can sit along the sides, I think. They can't sit.
No, 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 no. They, they actually have.
Staff members.
I've seen, uh, he, he used to be in Dunedin, and now he's in Largo, uh, over all the water issues. And he always comes as their delegate. So, you know, you could also think about whether Bob Burns, someone from, for.
Except that you're saying that they, they're struggling, that common issue, I'd hate to put somebody a day over in Orlando with the drive there and the drive home.
I mean, why don't we talk about it offline, because, yeah, I just want to make, and, and if we were going to send somebody, I'd say we send them the first meeting. Because that's where they really get into the priorities, and whether you really feel like it's going to. But last time, I mean, there was, it was a split vote on, on two issues, one barely, you know, defeated. I'm not sure it would fall into the category of some of your interests, so, but we should talk offline.
Utilities always has.
Yeah, I know you do.
I mean, because some of it is, like, you know, that we fought the fight on CRAs and some of the other stuff, and, you know, those issues come up again, and everybody's like, well, don't bring it up, because then we'll get hurt. You know, let it be, because it's been fought out, and now.
Well, the only thing I could see on that subject would be, and it's not transportation-related, it would be more about some of those, um, regulations that they're trying to pass, or have tried to pass, where if we change zoning on something, right, and it affects a business, and blah, 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 those are the kinds of issues that I would think might come up.
Yeah, and there could be a new push for that. There's a huge group on that, too, that have been wanting to, you know, have some big pushes on annexation. And that barely lost out last time, but it's every year, they're, you know, so it's a.
Mixed bag, you don't know.
It's a mix. But you're right, there's always something different like that.
So, you decide when you want to send somebody?
Wait a minute, I was at, you know, in municipal administration.
That's Commissioner Torga. You are utilities, natural resources.
A lot about vacation home rentals.
Absolutely.
A lot. That's a big, big, big.
Major subject.
So, that's great that you're covering that.
So, Mayor, just, just for clarification, you're talking about a staff person to accompany the elected official?
No, to go on.
As the delegate?
As the delegate. You, you guys decide. Like, what you just said, first meeting, you can see if there's anything.
You do, and, and let's look back at, I'm trying to remember, I know annexation lost out by a little bit, and I, and I think that that was about incentives. It was about business incentives last year that actually won out as their issue. But we need to look at it and see, because that would be a Bob Burns man. And actually.
Bob and George.
Bob has got a lot of knowledge he'd bring to the table.
Only having, having served on that committee before, um, I do know that there are staff members from economic development departments that do participate in those, um, committees, so it wouldn't be.
It wouldn't be unusual, is what you're saying?
Correct.
No. And environmental, that, that they have staff members.
Okay.
I've never honestly noticed whether they voted or not, but there's always a staff members in there, so.
Well, that's what I didn't realize.
But I, I didn't know that, I didn't, I didn't know they voted, so.
I'm not sure the vote, you know, sometimes just having the knowledge there is good.
Yeah.
It sways the vote.
So, I think we have, we have, we can ask that question, and give it an answer.
Okay, well, this isn't a vote per se, right?
Right.
Today?
No, it's just.
We're just, it's a consensus direction, and who's going to cover what?
Right, I'll take the first two.
Okay, so you've got, so Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Kynes has, um, utilities, and, um, but, uh, Commissioner Gao has, um, transportation, and Commissioner Torga has municipal admin. And Jennifer will look into whether there should be a staff person as a delegate for land use and economic development. Okay, very good. Then we have the proposed agenda for, um, the next work session. What did I see on there that I had a question about? Yeah, we have, uh, the parking garage discussion and the incubator discussion. None of those are decision-making. They're just.
No, information.
Next steps in the process, kind of, discussions. Okay, so we're good.
Yeah, that's what I had the question on, too.
Let's see, the Scottsdale Bluffs on there. Thank you, Nikki.
Okay, that's what I was going to make sure.
Yeah, it's on there.
Be, um, included. We did, I know it was still working through engineering, but we did receive the signed documents back, so it's ready to go.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion to approve the agenda for the 21st?
Go ahead.
Second.
Commissioner Franny and Vice Mayor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, before we jump into our workshop item, which should be pretty lengthy, why don't we take a quick five-minute break? And, uh, we'll come back and jump into it.
Sounds good.
We're going to adjourn at 11:55 to go out and raise the pride flag right at noon. And then we'll come back and re-adjourn if we're still going. But Nikki has to be out of here right at 12:30. I don't think it's going to take us that long, but she wants to update us on the Van Eck discussion, which I know will probably ensue some conversations. So I want to give her enough time. Do you think we'll be back in time for her to leave right out of here at 12:30?
I mean, I can only base it on last year. And I think last year was like 10, 15 minutes we were back.
Well, and Mayor, I really, I'm not really sure that this will invite a ton of discussion from my perspective. It may invite additional policy discussions that you all want to have, but I think I could pretty much summarize in about 30 seconds why the issue is not really a legal issue and it's more of a policy issue.
Okay, that's fine. And Rebecca has an update as well. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, though, for being mindful of that time. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer, who has some opening remarks.
Yes, good morning again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. This is your workshop item, Dunedin Golf Club Transition Plan. The last time we spoke to the City Commission about the transition plan, the City Commission had directed staff to bring back a side-by-side comparison of the National Golf Foundation estimates of upgrading the course, as well as the Donald Ross full restoration and what those estimates looked like. We do have a side-by-side embedded within your PowerPoint presentation, but we've gone way beyond that, actually. And we had to because of timing, because of trying to catch whenever we have to do the improvements with the offseason of the golf club. And the transition plan is no easy plan. I'm not going to steal any of Vince's thunder because he has a really good outline, but I do want to be very clear about why we're here today. This is a point in time. And we're bringing you up to date on all the activities that we have done in the intervening period in conjunction with the board and where it is we see the transition plan is going to go moving forward. This is the first chance the five of you have had a chance to review the updated information and to discuss it amongst yourselves. We're not making any formal recommendations today. We may look for consensus directions on some items, depending upon whether the City Commission wants to give that direction or not. But this is really an update on where we are with the transition plan. In the intervening period, a tremendous amount of work has been done, I feel, by staff and by the board as well, to bring the club along, to do exactly what the Commission directed us to do, meaning the board and city staff, which is to protect and support this asset, this tremendous asset within the city of Dunedin. And with that, I'll turn it over to Vince.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, Vince Giszi, Parks and Recreation Director. Just to add to what Jennifer said, we're also going to be looking at the next steps of the transition between the Dunedin Golf Club and the city operation. And the presentation this morning is really broken down into two parts. One is the operations, and the other part is the capital projects. So with that, I'm just going to review the agenda. We'll start, I'm going to start with introductions, some backgrounds, some very brief background, budget, personnel, food and beverage operations, and operational contracts, and that's mostly the operational side, and then capital improvements, master planning, course improvements, including drainage, clubhouse, maintenance facilities, National Golf Foundation, Ross restoration comparisons, or as Jennifer said, side-by-side, and then the timeline summary. So with that, I want to just go ahead and go into the introductions of the transition team who's been working on this project. And we do meet, we try to meet as close to weekly as we possibly can, starting with the City Manager, Jennifer Bramley, Deputy City Manager, Jorge Quintus, our Finance Director, Les Tyler, who, Les, you should be on Zoom?
He is.
Okay. HR and Risk Management, Teresa Smalling, Engineer, Senior Engineer, Bruce Worth, and Administration Superintendent, Laney Sheets, and myself is what makes up our team. And we've all done lots of different research in different areas, as you'll hear about this morning. And there's also several members of the Dunedin Golf Club Board of Directors here as well. So just starting with some very brief background, in August of 2021, a sustainability study was conducted by the National Golf Foundation. We were looking to see how sustainable the club could be over the next five to 10 years in the operation area of operations. The club had done very well, including and through COVID, but still unable to support all of the capital projects that need to be done to the golf course and to the clubhouse. November of, in 2021, we reviewed the operational structure with the City Commission. There were four options. One was to continue as is with a new license agreement, with stronger language. The second was the full property lease by an independent third party in exchange for capital investment and long-term agreement, which would give the city less control. Millions of dollars would be put in by the property lease. The third was management contract to hire a golf management company in exchange for a management fee, and this would be paying a management fees on top of all the expenses. However, the city would own the revenues. The fourth option, which was the one that was selected to move forward with, was the hybrid option with city control, with city employee general manager, and various contracts. Again, the transition team was formed with the Department, City Manager Office, Parks and Recreation, HR, Finance, and Engineering. Made up the transition team. So besides our weekly meetings, Jennifer and I also meet with the Board of Directors monthly to update them on what we've been doing and to hear any of their concerns and just bring them up to date with the status of moving forward. In March of 2022, we extended the license agreement with the Dunedin Golf Club Board of Directors for a six-month period and two three-month options. But our plan moving forward is going to, is going to be in a full-year timeline, is what you'll see this morning. With that, the next slide is for Les Tyler on the budget and finances. Les?
Hey, Les.
We're having a hard time hearing you. Hang on just a second, Les. No, but I think they need to turn it up in the back to the speaker.
I'm showing that this, yes, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good morning. This is Les Tyler, the Director of Finance, and I'm here to present some of the budget information for the golf course. And I'll start with the fact that our, the Golf Course Operations Fund will be an enterprise fund at the city under governmental can, Gasby Number 34. Golf courses should be an enterprise fund due to the fact that the golf course is set up with user fees that pay for the service, and that's basically the definition for an enterprise fund. I also want to mention that we discussed this with our CPA firm, MSLPA, and they've also advised us that they feel that the golf course should be set up as an enterprise fund, and that's how we're presenting in the budget currently in '23. But I mentioned that there's a paycheck protection program alone that the golf course still has, that we're still monitoring with the golf course. That's about $284,000. And my understanding is sometime in the next months or less, that, there's a process that the golf course will be going through to get that loan forgiven. So it'll be a grant instead of a loan. And a little bit on the operating budget, we've, we've got, gone through and done our first draft of the '23 operating budget, and we've still got more work to do on that budget. But right now, we're, we're planning that the budget will be a partial yield budget. We, assuming that we formally take the course over on June, on June 1st, or, excuse me, July 1st of 2023, that would be a three-month budget for our fiscal year '23 at the city. And if we happen to take it over three months before that, we'd have a six-month budget. But right now, we're developing a three-month operating budget for '23 at this point. We still have more work to do, as I mentioned, on the budget, but we are working, working on that now. And on the capital side, we have $4 million budgeted in our '23 budget. We've got $2 million of ARPA funding for the golf course, and that funding is here now and available to spend. And we also plan on issuing financing for the other $2 million for the remainder of the capital investments for the golf course. We're planning on more than likely issuing financing sometime in '24, probably. We're thinking sometime from October to May timeframe. We'll make sure we issue the financing well before the construction starts during that fiscal year. And we will possibly do an internal financing or just go out for probably a seven to 10-year loan, and we're going to work through that and determine in the months ahead what makes sense regarding what type financing to set up. We do, there, as far as funding sources for the project, the, there's potential funding from the Dunedin Golf Course to fund any costs that may go over $4 million for the project. Want to also mention that the golf course just recently sent out an application for an historic preservation grant for $500,000. That had a $500,000 match requirement, and we, and the application was, was showing our federal grant funding as 100% match on that grant. So that was just recently sent out, based on my understanding. And also want to mention that the future phases are currently unfunded at the, at the golf course beyond the $4 million, and the plan is to close the course once. And we'll be working on a plan to make sure that only happens one time. And the CIP project details will be on future slides.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Les while we're talking about this piece of it?
Um, do, Les, do we know when the application for historic preservation grant? Usually they have a timeframe of when they'll be heard or when they, you might know the answer. Do we have anything like that? It was just put in June 1st. This might be for Vince.
Yes, yes. I talked to Harry Gross, who helped write the grant, and he did submit it May 31st. And he, I had a conversation with him yesterday, and normal, he is trying to find that answer out a little more exact, but in his experience, it's normally around September when you start, you know, you go back and forth answering questions to them.
That would make sense because I think the historic grants, and in the Florida Council on Arts and Culture, we read grants all summer. So it would make sense that they would know sometime September, October.
Yes.
If they follow the same.
And again, he's finding out more exact. I just asked him last night, and he said he was, will check this morning.
Okay, so, and then I just wanted to be sure. He said the $500,000, if received, will be, it's a matching grant from the state, and you're going to go, match with ARPA?
Yes.
Either/or.
Either/or.
The club also has, as you know.
Either/or.
Right, operating reserve. So we have the match.
And so then, if you get it, so you'll end up with 40, 45?
4.5.
Okay. That's, that's what, because then you're giving part of an ARPA grant to match that, or either the club is giving the $500,000 or raising it to match that. So you're going to end up with 45.
Or 0.5.
4.5, that's what I meant. Okay, thank you.
I don't know if this is the best time to answer it, so if you want to wait, but I'm assuming at some point we'll be getting a, you know, kind of revenue expense effect on the fees type of a projection layout into the longer term. I mean, is that something that would probably happen after we bid things and we have a better understanding of what we can do, what we can't do, and then understand the effect on maintenance? Just wondering when we might see that.
I'd actually like to, we need to schedule the next touch, if you will, of the plant transition plan and bring, bring you back to financials and revenues expenditures and the full budget, that type of a thing. I'd like to bring that back to you, probably towards the end of summer, beginning of fall, when we really, you know, decide which direction we're going to go and when we know whether or not we get that grant and all those types of things. And keep in mind as well, as Les had said, you're going to have to adopt a partial budget already as part of your fiscal year '23 budget as well. So all of that information, we're actually working on it now. It's in draft form, but I'd like to bring it to you at a later date.
Good.
Commissioner?
Yeah, so Vince, just from a generality standpoint, without getting into any of the detail, we reviewed the four methods of how we might form this together some months ago.
Yes.
And now you're saying we're talking about an enterprise fund.
Oh, your, your microphone.
Well, thank you.
Sorry.
And so I was, I was saying that we were looking at the four different methods and we're now sort of have chosen, chosen one of them. Before you chose that, were you able to look at any of the forecasts? Did you have any kinds of forecast of what a budget might really look like or what a real-world scenario would look like under the different, different methods of operation? Was that taken into consideration or was this, was that, was that not necessarily?
It was all part of the, it was all part of the presentation to get where we are now to looking at option four, which was the hybrid. So all of that was taken into consideration. We knew that if you hire the management company, their fees are on top of all the expenses. And we learned yesterday from Ferdinand Beach, who is going through a very similar situation, that they, they didn't, they had a management contract that they terminated because they felt that they had enough strength within their own city to do it themselves. The, the reason that the full property lease wasn't selected was because of losing complete control over how the club operates. And continuing the license agreement with stronger language, there was still going to be a shortfall for the capital projects. So, so we looked at that level.
Okay, so not necessarily because you could still, we could still fund something. We could still fund something. We own the property. And therefore, then there's a requirement for some, I just want, but I'm not going to discuss that. I just wanted to know if you actually looked at different scenarios? If you did it this way, what would the revenue look like and what would the bottom line look like and how might that work? And so I wanted to ask that question for certain.
Question?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just for the remedial students back row, back to the entire funding, we got $2 million coming from ARPA, and $2 million alone and the potential funding from the, from the club, was that potential funding, is that the other $2 million that we're getting? I'm just trying to tie back into the 4.5. Was the $500,000 coming from the grant?
What 4.5?
It's with the grant.
With the grant.
She's talking about with the grant, if we get the grant.
Right, if we get the grant. Right, okay. And so just the $2 million loan that could come from the club or that is going to come from the club, is that determined yet?
Either/or.
Either/or.
Les, do you want to speak to that, or would you like me to?
Yeah, I can, sure, yeah. Commissioner, the loan will be a city loan. It'll be probably a covenant to budget loan for the city, similar to the one we just did for the CRA. So it'll be a city loan. I mentioned we may do an internal loan, short-term. You know, I'm hoping to, I'm hoping to, to time the loan, this loan with potentially other loans we'll have for other projects, and that's why we may do a short-term loan with one of our other funds. But, but it'll be a city loan or probably not being a seven to 10-year loan. I'm thinking right now, we've got to work through the details more. It'll be, it'll be our loan internally.
Okay, and as an enterprise fund, that repayment would come from club proceeds?
That's right. The plan would be that the enterprise fund revenues pay the debt service. You know, it'll probably be payments twice a year, I would imagine, semiannually. The plan would be that the club made the payments. If the club, the first couple of years, had a difficult time making the payments, then we would, we would have to, we would have to make, you know, the city would have to back, back the, back the loan and make the payment, whether that would be the penny fund. I recommend probably penny fund or general fund. We would have to back it because it's going to be a general city debt, but the plan, the plan is for the enterprise fund to pay the debt service.
So if I can add to that, because I think that we need to be really clear here that, that in the conversations that Les and I have had, that interest rates are going up. So a short-term loan originally, that was our original thought. An interfund loan, we borrow from ourselves at a very low interest rate. So we could do the interfund loan and then take out a loan in the future when the interest rates go down, so that we can kind of leverage our resources. We need to be cognizant of the fact that the club, as far as revenue that they're generating, may not be able to pay back that, that loan, given that they're going to be closed for a period of time. So we need to take all of those things in consideration. The goal, the end goal, and for me, the mission critical, is to ensure that there is very limited hit on the general fund moving forward. We've evaluated the revenues that are generated by the club, and Les has been up to his elbows in their budget, and we think that we're going to be able to accomplish that. That said, you know, in our conversation with the City Manager of Ferdinand Beach yesterday, they did subsidize their, their golf club for, in order to realize some of the capital improvements. So we need to hold that in reserve. The club has some, some reserve available to us, and, and we need to put that in the fray as well because they're not going to be generating any revenue, and we will have that loan because we need to realize these capital improvements. So all of those things are in this mix, and it's something that we will bring back to in a very clear form. But it's, it's a complicated form of financing, if you will, but I do think that we'll be able to realize our end goal here. The club did well last year. The rounds, you know, increased actually during COVID, and golf has made its own little resurrection, if you will. But again, though, you know, the, the issue is that date that the club's going to be closed, and making sure that we still, that we're, that we're not tapping the general fund during that time.
That was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
My question, and it's on a later slide, but it has to do with the budget. And so I'm going to look at you, Les. On a later slide, it shows the Director, the.
Yes.
What's, what's the title?
We're calling this a Division Director of Golf Operations.
As a 50/50 split because of Sterling, and I know Teresa's going to talk about that. But anyway, I'm just throwing it out here because you're here, and it, and it involves both departments, and it just seems to me that there'll be a lot more work at the golf club than there will be at Sterling. And so, you know, I just throw it out there to be considering it to be, you know, some other form instead of 50/50. I don't want to tell you what it should be, whether it's 70/30 or 60/40 or whatever. I mean, obviously, that analysis needs to occur, but since you're sitting here, I just want to put that out there. I'm not saying what you should do, but I would, you know, love at a future time when you come back to have had that analysis because I'm, I'm just thinking that the golf club's going to be a lot more work than the driving range. And if it isn't, then there's a problem. I'm just saying. Okay.
I'll work with Teresa now. Thank you.
Can I just tag onto that? And, and Sterling's making money now, but where does that, where does that extra revenue go now?
General fund.
So, yeah, okay. So again.
Yeah, it'll pay for itself, but.
Well, yeah, but it hits the general fund.
Well, and I would also say.
Yeah, I'm going to wait to hear more detail, but.
You almost want to say that that should be part of the enterprise, too. I mean, it's golf.
Actually, we thought about that, and we talked to our auditor. Les, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, we looked, we looked at that, and we, we talked to our auditing firm on that, too. And at this point in time, they feel like it's, even though, is it, even though they both have driving ranges, the, 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 the activities that take place at the golf course, including golf and all the other things that go on there, are a lot broader than what's going on at Sterling. And also Sterling is going to, is kind of sort of planned to be a park, possibly having a dog park in the near future and things like that. So right now, we feel like they're not as alike as they should be to be combined, but we will continue to look at that, you know, in the, in the future to see if there's a relationship that makes sense. But right now, we think that the Sterling should stay in the general fund as a general fund department.
Okay.
I had one other thing, and I think this is Les, because you said something about the PPP loan forgiveness, is that still an outstanding debt?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes, that's still an outstanding, it's currently, it's currently a debt on the golf course books, and the, and the golf course is, is working through, following the guidelines and reporting requirements to, and once those are, are all, are all, have all taken place, it should eventually be moved into a grant instead of a loan, but it currently is a loan.
Okay, and, and the amount?
It's $284,000.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move to the next slide.
There you go.
And I'll introduce Teresa again, who's going to take the next three slides regarding personnel and employees. personnel and employees.
Good morning again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Teresa Smalling, Director of HR and Risk Management for the city. Just want to thank Chuck for assisting with giving us all the preliminary personnel documentation that we needed to see what the personnel operations were like at the golf club. Based on the current employee roster, we are looking at changing the org chart somewhat because we've parsed out the food and beverage staff. There are 13, we'll call them admin type staff, and we're proposing to take on 10, if you would go to the org chart. So, as we said, we're proposing a division director of golf operations. I did a quick survey of our sister cities that have golf courses and the managers that are there. And based on that survey, we're looking at a division director grade salary range for that position. We're almost done with the job description, so we're looking to probably post that in later this month. As you can see from the org chart, we are keeping the receptionist, staff assistant, golf professional, assistant golf professional, golf shop attendant, and then three, two full time and three part time cart range attendants. And then the food and beverage, depending on, you know, what consensus direction is the contract, there is already a maintenance contract in place, so we're keeping that as is for now. And then, pretty much, that's it for personnel. I can take any questions that you have. We, we basically grafted the positions that we're going to keep into our city pay plan, of course, pending final, the org review and the pay study that we're currently doing. So, the benefits for the full time would be the, similar to what the city employees are currently receiving.
And this is your timeline for the division director of golf operations hire?
Yes. We're looking to have the, the division director onboard on or around October so that they can start taking an active part in looking at golf operations, giving input on the contracts that we currently have and the contracts that we may have in the future.
Okay. All right, I'll start at this end this time. Any questions?
So, I think you're saying that we'll be adding five FTEs, correct?
I, it's actually...
Division Director of Golf, Receptionist, Staff Assistant, one, two, three, four, five, six.
It's actually seven, seven full time FTEs and three variable on demand.
Ooh, okay, so, but you're counting the city manager with her?
No, no.
One, two, three, four, five.
I'm general fund, you gotta, you gotta pay for your 4.5.
Yeah, so, one, two, three, four. See, I've got...
We should have moved your budget over to the enterprise.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I was not counting the 3.5.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, 7.5.
So, keep in mind, FTEs are different from actual bodies. That, I think that's the conversation we have. So, there are 10 actual positions that we're adding, but 7.5 FTEs.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt, but I do want to add that, that this is a draft organizational study plan, that we are missing one position, which is the accountant.
Yeah.
And Les is going to need help. And the club has its own accounting system that, that's, that, you know, we need to talk a lot more to the club about that. I don't want to be tied into this as a result of this meeting.
No, no.
Because we need to continue to work it.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a, you know, let me say that this is a workshop and what we're doing is it's very high level. And what we're looking over today is the things that we are trying to put together and get consensus on. It is not locked in stone.
Right, yes, thank you.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Understanding it's not locked in stone, the receptionist, staff assistant is on the city side. And I'm just trying to figure out, I know that the, the job description might still even be in play, figuring it out, but I'm trying to figure out what their day to day jobs, how much interaction will they have with food and beverage versus golf?
So, when you walk into the golf club now, there's somebody sitting, sitting at that desk? That's the position that we're talking about.
Right.
So, you know, depending on how the food and beverage comes out, they may have to be a hostess at sometimes. I don't know. We'd have to see how that goes. But for the most part, they'll be front desk support.
Do you see that, that salary being paid similar to the division director that it is split between the funds?
That's always a possibility. I mean, we haven't gotten down to cost centers yet. We just wanted to look basically at what salaries, what, what proposed salaries would look like and what our personnel play, pay plan would come out. So, yeah, cost centers would probably come down to, are they, will they be doing any work for the Sterling links or additional city work?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms.?
Just one question. So, do you see any obvious conflicts as you tried to slide those positions into our current pay plan as how they compare with other employees? Both good or bad in terms of the market?
I think, I think it came out pretty well. The cart range attendants, if we stay with the current plan, they would see a significant increase in their salaries because our lowest paid employee is about $1,250. So, and they're currently being paid $10 an hour. So, I, I think it's, the way I slotted it in, looking at our current grades, and of course, everything is sort of fluid now because we are going through that organizational review. And we, we may even ask our consultant to take a quick look.
Good idea.
And just, you know, see if we're, you know, the premises that I used to slot those positions in are correct and relevant.
Okay, thanks, Teresa.
Commissioner?
I want to speak in real sweeping generalities here. So, I've been concerned about this as an enterprise fund from the standpoint of that very, that very subject, although it's not a significant a number of folks. Having been in a business like this or an associated with this business, sometimes there's a need for some flexibility. But, but I'm very familiar with also with courses that, that are literally really not called a golf course, really called just municipal courses. And I've been there and played on them. So, that's, that is just a general concern. I also have a comment because I did discuss this with the city manager about the, I made it, just made a comment about this, the split with the general fund. And I'm not associating that split with anything about the general fund, other than it just being financed by the general fund, because I didn't see any work as relates to Sterling or anything else. And we commented about that and discussed that. So, as I look at this, I, again, we don't have any cash flows or anything to look at and we're making decisions. We, we may make a decision. As we said, we, we may not be, we may just be listening to that. But as we go forward, we've got $2 million and $2 million. One, one of the $2 million is from ARPA and nobody's returning the ARPA money. Nobody's going to return any money from us from ARPA, from the golf club, I would assume. And then there's a second part of it, and that's the loan part. And are we expecting, are we expecting from a cash flow to cover that loan? Or is that, is that, is that an investment on our side?
I think that one's a book.
That's not a question.
That would be a less, that would be a less question for Jennifer.
That's, that's a question that starts to slide over here, but it's affected by, by this, I think.
Les and I have had that discussion. Les?
Yeah, Commissioner, the plan is that the golf course would pay the debt service. And as, as the city manager mentioned a few minutes ago, there, especially the year we close, during those months, there's a, there's a possibility that, that if they're not able to make that, one, any of those payments, there'll be, probably two payments a year, then we may have to assist with that, with that payment or those couple of payments. But the, but the plan is that the, that the golf course enterprise fund pays the debt service, whether it's a seven or 10 year loan. That's, and, and we believe that's, that's attainable, yeah.
So, I think I heard that, yes, they're going to be responsible for the, for the payback of that debt in its entirety and the, and the financial cost of that debt.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And so, I looked at the food and beverage. I'm very interested to see what, what additional information that we hear about that. So, I'm, I'm real anxious to hear, hear that, that input.
That's our, our next slide coming up.
And I apologize, Jennifer, because I didn't think of this yesterday, but just having had that conversation, you know, if the club revenues are going to be paying off that $2 million, let's say. We also have to have a plan to be putting money aside for the future capital because, you know, every 10 years, you've got to do certain things. Every five years, you have to do certain things.
Right.
So, you're feeling that both of those things can be accomplished?
I think that we'd have to have a look at it. First of all, you know, as far as the capital goes, the course will be improved and in great shape. So, we could take a couple of years, you know, in those terms.
No, I get it, but still, I mean, that's part of the problem where we are today is those, you know, industry standard guidelines, right? That say you should do certain things at a certain time, every, you know, whatever. I want to make sure that we're leaving enough money to put aside for that.
Yes, two things. We need to put money aside for, one, the course is closed. And we need to put money aside for future capital improvements. Yes.
Even, and the potential for the increase in maintenance.
Right, yes.
And the future improvements would probably include a renovation or, that's not possibly the word, of the clubhouse. I mean, at some time...
Well, we haven't gotten to that conversation yet, so it's...
But, but we've got to keep...
I have a feeling we're going to get to that conversation.
Somebody's got something to say about that, I can already feel it.
Oh, yeah.
Since we're making, since we're making comments about that, so that's, that is, that's what's called a whole total plan. So, you've got, in an enterprise fund, you have operation and you have CIP. So, that would be in the CIP, I would assume, when we see the thing, all of the, everything.
Yep, okay. What's next?
Just before we move on, and, and, because I want to commit this to the record, as far as the division director, everybody's very interested in that position, that person, because everybody feels that that's a crucial position moving forward. So, the recruitment process, I intend to use the same recruitment process that we've used for directors, which I feel has been very successful. We've hired some, some pretty good folks. And that is a national recruitment, the, and a 360 interview process, which means that the board would meet the person, the employees, that, that this person would be supervising, would meet the person. We would, certainly our division directors will, will meet the, the future division director. I think that it's important that if we, we narrow it down to a couple of candidates, that we open up to the membership to meet this person as well. And then make our decision from there moving forward. And one of the things that, that I've shared with Teresa several times is that even if it's a close recruitment and you have several good candidates, after you do that 360 interview, the, the decision is often very easy because everybody coalesces into one person. So, but ultimately, it will be my decision and the person will, will answer to, to, to me as well. So, I wanted to commit that to the record for the board because that's what I stated to them during one of their meetings. Thank you.
Well, since you're also talking about personnel, you know, there was a question about the current personnel. Do you want to address that?
In terms of the organizational chart here or, yes. So, so essentially, those, the people that you see in blue here then would become city employees, yes?
Okay.
Thank you.
If we're talking about personnel, can I make a comment, additional comment? So, the, I just want to throw this out there and it's a little bit of a change probably, but I know that we have a number of people here that live in Dunedin that have done this before and maybe even retired, that, that, that may like a, may like a piece of this going forward, could do it very efficiently because there's times when we're not having a cash flow, positive cash, or any cash flow, because we've got a closed club. And, and we're trying to accomplish something that, that's going to be laid out for us. And that group, that individual could perhaps do that comfortably, they're already here. And, and so, it's just a thought to, to open up. They would probably be, or they would be extremely knowledgeable about golf, just, just like what you're looking for. They're here, they're up to speed, and they may have a lot of flexibility in, in their work schedule and, and in, in their requirements. So, I...
Commissioner, a piece of what? I don't understand.
Of the golfers.
Of, of the transition plan?
They're professionals, they're professional, they've done this before, yeah.
You mean input on the transition plan?
No, to do, to, for that one position that's going to head to...
So, they could apply?
No, got it, okay.
Yeah, they could compete.
For sure? They can apply?
No, I'm actually saying, looking at it a different way, realizing that you're going to build this and you're going to have issues going forward when you're building this. You're going to have close down times, et cetera. And we may have those folks here once we get running, if this is, if this is an enterprise fund. At that point in time, you may wish to do another, another search like that. Searches are long, can be, can be long, can be expensive. And we're, we're going to want to be up and running, I would assume, pretty quick. Not running as a golf course, but running as how we're going to accomplish this task. So, I thought, I met, I talked to a number of people about that before. Just tossing that out as an alternative.
So, Jennifer, you were saying that you were, Teresa was saying it, but I'm looking to you, about you want to get whoever you do hire, their input on the long term decisions that are being made, right?
Right, yeah. And, and actually, one of the criteria is going to be that this particular person has, has overseen a renovation of a golf course because there are all sorts of moving parts. I do think, I appreciate your comment, Commissioner. I think it's important that we do a national search, though, in a competitive process to hire this position. And certainly, I mean, if, if we have that person here and they have, have that skill set, and, and we would certainly look at them and put them before the board, put them before the, the employees of the club and, and, and all the other groups that they tend to...
We talked about a board. Is that board going to stay the same as what the board is today or...
So, the board is in place now. And the board will be in place through December with two, three month extensions. And, and then the board will be, that, that agreement ends in June of 2023, when the city will take over on July 1st of 2023. The, we have committed to the board in place right now that, that, as I said, they'll have input in that general manager, as well as input in the scope that, that we put for, for a golf course architect and those types of things. So, and it really is the avenue by which we're able to do what we're doing right now. The board holds the liquor license, the, you know, and all those types of things. So, it's, it's really important that, that we work with the board as far as the transition goes. And I believe that they're committed to, to this process, a competitive process for the general manager. They can speak for themselves, obviously.
I mean, as we all know, you can bring in a general manager and he can leave in two years, so...
Yes.
So, we're all acutely aware of that. So, I, I just, I made my comment, thank you.
Okay. Next? Thank you, Teresa.
Next slide is food and beverage operations. So, we, we looked at two different options. Some of them have already been briefed on. The first option was city run with city employees, which is a business that we're really not in at this point. It would require 20 plus city employees, some full time, some part time. As Jennifer mentioned, obtaining a liquor license and dealing with purchasing of food and beverage. Or the, the second option was to look at a request for qualifications or request for proposal, outsourcing, which is the preferred option that we're considering at this point. We, we had some success with, we've had good success with Obay Cafe and also with Sail Honeymoon, similar but, but different. There's the city property running food operations and sailing operations. We'd be looking to put the bid out by November of '22 or the RFP. We would look at the evaluation, forming an evaluation committee and looking at the bids between December '22 and January '23, commission award in February of '23, beginning the contract beginning June of '23. And we would also give favorable or additional points through the process for retaining the existing... existing employees.
Okay, questions? I'll start with you, Commissioner Franny.
I just had one. So how do we handle the current operations that are going on now? And in the sense of, so if we got to bid and we know from the sustainability study that, you know, we don't have any guarantees, what quality we'll get of bidders? So how do we, how do we kind of blend that with having an operation that is at least making money now and seems to be doing a good job?
I'm not clearly understanding your question.
Well, I mean, obviously, we don't want the current operator to just say, oh, I'm gone, I'm going to leave, and then all of a sudden our bids come in and we don't have a lot of great options. So how do we balance that so we don't end up, at the end of the day, with a surprise lack of good bidders and a frustrated operation that we have in place now?
I'm not real, I'm still, basically, we're going to be looking to bring in a food and beverage operator that's qualified and has the financial means to run the operation that, you know, that's there now, and doing it with outsourcing versus putting 20-something employees on our payroll.
Okay, I guess I'll be straight out transparent.
Okay.
All I'm saying is, you've got to respect the person you've got now because if you don't get good bidders, you've got to go back to the person we have now somehow. So I'm just saying, I'm assuming that's a sensitivity that you have in terms of respecting the current operations while you're looking to potentially change the direction.
And then we would have to go back to option one, which would be city-run operation.
Right, right. But again, it's about respecting the current operation while you're changing.
Yes, and, you know, of course, we're given the higher scores. There'll be additional points in the RFP process for retaining, committing to retain the existing employees.
Right, so, yeah, and that's a good point because that helps them realize, like, you know, we're going to have potentially a place here, we want to stay here, we believe in the change, so.
And then I do want to mention, I just wrote a statement, at the, the club presented a third option to us. At their board meeting on May 26th, so it's just recent, our transition team has not had a chance to discuss this option, but we will at our next meeting, next Tuesday. The club president, Gary Huffka, is here, and will be briefly mentioning under public comments what their, what their option that they'd like us to discuss, the city staff, before we bring it till, before we-
I hate when we hear things that you guys haven't fed it out yet because it's just last minute, you know?
But I think it's something Gary wants to say. He can say what he wants as a-
Oh, of course. I just don't want to carry a whole presentation on something that the staff hasn't heard yet.
Yeah, I got it. No, that's my only question. I mean, obviously, I'm just, you know, when I've been involved in other transitions like this, and it's very difficult, so it's very important to be respectful as you move forward, keep everybody in the loop, and I know by you guys doing your regular meetings, you're attempting to do that, so that's all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I have a comment about that, and now I realize maybe it's a little bit premature, but I, I guess I'm just revealing sort of my direction of how I think this perhaps ought to go, and I haven't heard everything yet, but I'm, I would suggest or be very respectful of that being, that being a club, a facility that sits there today. Would like to see it continue to function. I'm not against having somebody else do that if that's the direction. I'm not sure we ought to be doing that at the same time that we're trying to do the golf course itself, and if there's a way that we could, it's not easy getting a liquor license, I would assume. And we have a board that has a liquor license at this point, and we have employees that are functioning at that club. The club is used by a number of different organizations, et cetera. And I'll just make my comment, I mean, I've only heard, I've heard good things about what's happening regarding the service and the food and beverage, and others may have heard other things, but I would be very, very respectful of having that continue and it's, the way that it's functioning, however way somebody wants to put that together, sounds like somebody's got a plan to perhaps do that, so that we're not making that change as well. I don't know that that has to be made at this point in time, and the focus really is on the golf course, and that's where it ought to be, that's where we're putting a lot of money. So I'll make that comment. I'm not certainly for that section or part belonging to the city in any shape, manner, or form at all. It's a whole different business than what the city does. And so I'll make that comment, but obviously, we haven't heard, there's other things we're going to be hearing that, so I'll leave it at that. I'm just trying to talk real general right now because we haven't seen any numbers or anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I mean, I-
Questions or comments?
Yes. I really thought that, you know, I thought Commissioner Franny and Commissioner Torga both talked to something. It's going to be a real sensitivity, it's going to be a real tightrope because, you know, we're looking at somebody new, except we have, you know, it's been shown that we have, you know, good beverage and options there. So that's going to be a tightrope. And Commissioner you, Franny, you worked in HR. So I think that's what you're hearing from at least a few of us, that that's going to be a very difficult decision, and we need to, you know, we've got to respect what they've done to bring it up and worked hard to bring up those operations, so that's it.
Commissioner?
Thank you. I think that sensitivity, concern, balance has kind of been a common theme with food and beverage throughout. And as I'm looking at this, it looks like with the RFP, we would like that contract to begin June of '23.
Yes.
Right, and then acknowledging that construction is going to start, hopefully, by April of '24.
Yes.
And so we're going to bring in, potentially bring in somebody new that's going to have 10 good months, maybe, not even that. And then we're going to close down the course around them, and just concerned about the timeline, I guess is what I'll say.
Are you concerned about that timeline? Yes.
I'm a little concerned about the timeline too, but-
Can I just tack onto that, though? Or you want to go first, Sam?
That's okay.
Okay, it's all good.
All hail Mo. Go ahead.
No, it's fine, go ahead. All good.
I'm concerned about the timeline too, but not enough to stop the process without you, I'm just expressing this concern for you all to discuss. I don't want to dictate how you're going to do this. What I will say, though, and I know we're not quite there yet, but we're talking about food and beverage, I don't know how you attract somebody, a quality organization, without having them, without showing them exactly when the clubhouse upgrades are going to happen and them being a part of it. That's what's going to attract somebody. Not upgrading it or making it phase two with no specific plan and timeline, you're not going to attract a quality food and beverage organization. So, you know, I'm just saying that now, we'll talk about the phases later, but that itself is going to be a bad, you know, we're shooting ourselves in the foot by not doing it at once. But I'm okay with whatever you all decide, as long as you've heard the concerns expressed when it comes to who you're hiring and how you're hiring.
Correct. So Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as the concerns go, I'm concerned about the RFP, obviously, in terms of whether, you know, the responses that we get, but staff feels that we need to go to RFP, we need to go to market. I think that it's our responsibility to go to market as far as food and beverage goes and see what happens. And, you know, my concern is the timeline and who responds and who doesn't and that type of a thing, but I think that that's important to go to RFP.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vince?
Next slide is operational contracts, and you'll see several up there. The first is the grounds maintenance, and right now, there's a company called Down to Earth that the club has contracted with, and the contract is good through June of '23. So we would be recommending that we would have to go out for a rebid because by that time, we'll have taken it over, so we would be rebidding the grounds operation. But right now, we do have a contractor in place that's doing a decent job, Down to Earth, and it's good through the length of when our contract and addendum expires. There are some other equipment leases with different expiration dates. We could possibly assume some of those leases, renegotiate or rebid. The golf cart leases are good through January of '25, so we would be looking at assuming, it's a good program that our golf pro, John Falcone, has worked on, and everybody seems to be happy with the carts, and so I would recommend that we would look to assume that lease. There's the Easy Links, which provides a point of sale for golf, food and beverage, its website and software platform in exchange for tee times. Again, Laney Sheets has done a lot of research, spent a lot of time with John on discussing some of these leases and also the, this point-of-sale system. There's also some restaurant equipment that's leased. We also had worked with Chuck, which, again, both Chuck and John have been very cooperative through this whole process. So whatever, the city may assume contracts that do extend past 2023.
Okay, any questions or comments on any of this?
Here's my question, and I've really been rolling this around in my mind, because why can't we, it's not possible to do it laterally at the same time? I mean, get the new division person in, whoever wishes to apply, and do the, do the work on all the maintenance for the golf club because then they run parallel. You've got someone that's, you know, working, figuring out, or whatever, this major new job, and at the same time, you have the, all the downtime, which seems like it would give that person time, however it all works out, to really familiarize, change systems, add systems, whatever, if it could run parallel. That's what I'm trying to say.
So you're talking about all these things?
I'm trying to say, if you're going to be down, why don't you have, give the person a real time to learn and everything and see, do all those renovations at the same time? It doesn't-
What, Vice Mayor, if I may, what renovations? Do you mean the clubhouse? Do you mean the operational contracts?
I'm talking about the maintenance of the golf course.
So this is just standard maintenance? Yeah, this is standard maintenance-
But I mean, no, 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 I'm not saying this right. When they redo the golf course, why couldn't you parallel that to when you bring in your new, because this is what you're saying, is that you're going to start this new thing and then you're going to start your renovations in 20-
'24.
'24. And so it seems like you could sync it by running parallel. You see what I mean?
With our wanting, you're wanting that person's input.
Yes, so I think that it's really important that the division director be hired early, and the reason for that is to oversee, actually, the renovation of the golf course. It's a tremendous amount of work. There's going to be a lot of paperwork involved as far as a request for bid, and that we have all the right things in the bid, overseeing the job, they'll be working with our public works department, but this will be the project manager on that renovation. That's why it's important that whomever we hire has renovation experience and those types of things, as well as the operations within the golf course itself. And so, you know, I think that it's important that we have that additional body with the expertise because nobody on staff has done a golf course renovation.
No, and I'm just saying, why couldn't you do it parallel at the same time?
Because there's a lot of work to, as you know, any construction project, there's a huge lead time for design and those types of things, and then the construction projects itself, actually, once you get there, to me, that's almost the easy part, although don't ask Corde about this involvement.
Day-to-day supervision.
Right.
You know, when you've got someone really on the, you know, like, you know, City Hall, you know, the Blue, all the Blue Jay-
You want them involved in the prep.
Yeah, you remember that City Hall-
Cause they're really enforcing all the things you've put into plans at the time you get into the project.
And that's the reason for this 10-month gap?
Yes.
Okay.
As well as for the person to be, to be, become accustomed to the club, the way the club operates, some of these systems, and the membership, and the fee players, you know, and that type of thing. So I think it's important that this person, when we go under construction, has a real, real understanding of the club.
And so now, do you have any issues with the timing? That's what I've-
Okay, I want him to talk about these things. That's what we're here to talk about now. He can bring up something later. You took us off course.
Uh-uh.
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 On this page, no, just, and I know, and I know things are still fluid, Jennifer or Vince, but just acknowledging that the P O West system is for the golf and food and beverage, and who pays for that system and fund does that come out of?
There is no payment. It is an exchange for services, for the tee times. So there's no money, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong. We don't pay any money, or the club does not pay any money for their point-of-sale system, and has an accounting system that they use as well.
Times and dates, right?
It's an exchange for tee times.
So the times, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. What was it?
And I, so, and I apologize if I get off track again, but the, but just to clarify, there is a very specific, and this is in the future slides when we get to the CIP, the renovations from the course have to start in that April timeframe. There is no other time of year that you can start that. So our choices are April of '23, which we do not have the time between now and April of '23 to start the golf course renovations and get the complete design and all of the things that need input from the new general manager that need to go into that discussion. So our only choice is April of '24. We, as a city, would be taking over the course in June of '23. So taking over in June of '23 through the CIP has to start in April of '24. Those are two dates that are fixed. We have no control over those two dates.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any questions or comments on the operational contracts, I understand it.
Wow.
Wow.
Oh.
Sorry, did I just skip all over you guys?
You did.
I am so sorry. Do you have questions, John, on the operational contracts?
You were just giving some dates, and I'm just showing how you can circumvent some of those dates, and that was my conversation about somebody who may design the course. The person that's running-
Okay, we're not, again, we're not talking, we're talking about the operational contracts is what we're talking about, and I'm trying to keep her on course. I can't let all of you go off course, too. Come on, we've got, we have only so much time.
I couldn't be more specific about an operational contract.
No, the operational contracts that were on this list.
Yes, yes.
Not designing of the course. This is maintenance, equipment leases, golf carts, Easy Link, restaurant equipment. That's what we're talking about.
I understand it. She made a comment about-
I know, and I, probably, she probably shouldn't because I'm trying to keep our conversation on course. That's it. Okay, because, look, we've got 30 minutes to wrap this up. Okay, because, look, we've got 30 minutes to wrap this up. Okay.
Okay, so the side-by-side, let me just explain. We looked at, and first, I want to thank Kevin Genica for helping us with this and Chris Spence from the Donald Ross designer, Richard Singer, of course, our consultant, and Laney Sheets all worked on putting this side-by-side together. So the National Golf Foundation, well, let me just explain a little bit about the chart also. The, where you see the zeros, zero dollars under Donald Ross, beginning with the bridges on down, that was not estimated, cost estimated. So those, we just took the National Golf Foundation's number and put it into a plan, the plan combined. And so we also took the higher number of the cost estimates, and we put that in the plan combined as well. So starting with the irrigation, the National Golf Foundation put in, their estimate was a million dollars. Donald Ross was $970,000. So those were very, very close for the irrigation. The greens, $580 for the National Golf Foundation's number and $833 for the Donald Ross. And that's because the National Golf Foundation basically was going to renovate the existing greens in the place, pretty much the same size. The Donald Ross greens will be more substantial, bigger, and so they'll be, of course, more expensive. The tees, tee boxes were relatively close in price. Richard Singer from National Golf Foundation didn't put anything in for, well, let me go back to the fairways, only put in for the practice area in his proposal, where the Donald Ross put in for the, expanding the fairways, which you can see there's a big number difference there from $115 to $959. Richard Singer with National Golf, the bunkers, he didn't include any additional bunkers, where $518,000. Again, Ross' plan was more substantial. There was 80-plus bunkers, I believe, that were included. Drainage improvements, we didn't really, weren't really clear from either. So we put their numbers in, but it's really a placeholder, and the city would need to be a little more involved in the direction on draining the course properly. And Bruce Worth, our city senior engineer, is going to be helping us with that. Tree and stump removal, the Donald, excuse me, National Golf Foundation didn't put anything in capital. It was mostly in maintenance, root pruning, trimming trees, maybe removing some of the dead trees, where the Ross estimate was based on removing several trees. And you'll see that the number that we added there under plan combined was even more than $63,000. We just didn't feel the amount of trees that would need to be removed, trimmed, pruned, would be more than 100, would be around $100,000. The cart paths, National Golf Foundation was doing mostly repair work, where the Ross, Donald Ross estimate was more of rerouting some of the cart paths to match up the new design. There was no money in for bridges, and you'll see the numbers in there for National Golf Foundation, but there was no money in there for repairing or replacing bridges, Donald Ross, nor the maintenance building, or the clubhouse, or the patio expansion, or the themed improvements. So we used the National Golf Foundation's number in the plan combined. And then we also factored in a 10% contingency and a 15% escalation cost. So you can see the three different numbers, what Richard Singer with the National Golf Foundation proposed, what Chris Spence with the Donald Ross design proposed, and then the third column is where we think we may end up with doing it together. So now, at least, we have more apples to apples. And rightly so. Chris Spence was really, there was a grant that he received to do this work for us, and it didn't include some of those structures like maintenance buildings and clubhouse and bridges. So if there's any questions on the side-by-side?
Well, let's just keep going so we can, because we have to let other people speak, too. And I'm just looking at the time. And we'll save our questions for the end.
So capital improvements. Jennifer's going to take the next couple of slides.
Okay, so, and thank you. I mean, I think that we've made a lot of progress, a lot of information for all of you to digest. The, I think that one of the issues that we've been dealing with, with the golf course transition plan since November, is the pressure involved in the big reveal, whether it's, you know, we're going to support a full Donald Ross restoration, or the National Golf Foundation, or, you know, whatever it is that we're going to do. And we've done some research in the intervening period. We've spoken to a number of golf course operators. We visited Sarah Bay, which is a full Donald Ross restoration. Beautiful golf course, it's a private club, you know, and that type of a thing. So what I keep on getting back to, though, is that what our responsibility as staff is and the recommendation that we need to make to the city commission, to all of you, and then you make your decisions based upon that recommendation, may not always, as you know, jive with what we're recommending, but regardless, we need to provide a recommendation to you that I believe is the best business decision regarding this city asset. The major revenue generator of that golf course is the golf, the golf itself. And that's what attracts people to that area, that's what attracts people to the clubhouse, that's what supports the asset itself. And as a result, I think that we need to ensure that we support and maintain and improve the golf course function and the golf course itself. So the big reveal is whether or not it's going to be Donald Ross restoration, or National Golf Foundation, or what it is. I met with the board informally a couple of weeks ago, I think, maybe three weeks ago. And I conveyed to them that we have been given a budget, I feel, supported by the city commission, which is $4 million. It's $2 million from ARPA and up to $2 million as either short-term loan or interfund loan, whatever that is, that we support a restoration in the spirit of Donald Ross, get as far as we possibly can to strike at the spirit of that Donald Ross with that $4 million, but I feel that that is our budget. The course, then, the board had offered to submit the grant, which they did. They hired Harry Gross, and he submitted the grant for $500,000. And so, and whatever else we realize from what they currently have within their reserves. So the full Donald Ross restoration, then, would be, in priority order, when we bid a contract, would be the drainage, the irrigation, the greens, the tees, and the fairways and those types of things. I think that our mission critical is to improve the course in the spirit of Donald Ross. And what I'm concerned about when we talk about phases, phase one and phase two, our phase one, or maybe just say our priority needs to be, and our funding sources need to be dedicated to the course itself and the golf operation. That said, when we bid the project, if there's, and we realize a 4.0, you know, the $500,000 grant, or any other funding that we have, we can look at and fold in improvements to the clubhouse itself and what that looks like. I don't think that today, we necessarily even need to make those decisions, allow us to continue to allow, along the process, but that the, our priority, and I hope that we can agree to our priority, is the golf course operation and that function. I want to say something in general about that as well. The golf course itself, you know, you've heard a lot on social media when we did the ARPA funding, and you hear, you know, other, in social media outlets, why are you improving this course for just a number of people who play golf? We're improving the course as an asset of the city and also because it directly relates to property values in that area. It genuinely does. And that the course and the current condition of the course is, even though they've generated more rounds than they ever have, it is degenerating and the course play, those folks are going to go away. They have lots of choices. And so we understand that the Donald Ross restoration, and we understand from those courses that we have reviewed, that it actually improves the number of rounds on the course moving forward, that it becomes a tourist attraction. One of the things also, as far as the phases go, if I may say, that, and in working with the board, we all agreed that when we close it down, it needs to happen once. So the course itself. So that's why the funding that we're looking at, as far as the ARPA funding and the city's portion of the share, needs to be put into those golf course improvements that would necessitate closing the course so that we only do it that one time. And then any additional revenue that we have left over, we can look at additional phases, and either it can be at the same time, if we have it, or a future phase if we do not. But that our priority is improvements to the course itself. So then phase two would be the maintenance area improvements and the clubhouse improvements with input from the food and beverage contractor. That said, we have some really good ideas, we feel, on the maintenance area improvements. We might be able to leverage some of our resources using the driving range, storage area as well. So, and that would save us $400,000, you know. So the whole point is that we really need to take steps forward in the process with direction from the city commission, that it's the golf course function that we need to pursue in those improvements. So the next steps for us, then, as far as capital improvements, would be the RFP, the golf course architect. And the RFP would say, these are our priorities, and this is how much funding we have. So tell us how we get there. And then, you know, irrigation, drainage, greens, tees, and fairways. Not necessarily in those orders, irrigation is probably number one because the system is so old, and that's why the course is in the shape that it's in right now. And as Vince had alluded to, and Laney as well, we have a timeframe and a timeline involved, and we need to continue to move forward to attain that timeline, which is construction commencing in April of 2024. So, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners.
Okay. We're timed for questions now, right?
And then the, did you, then the very last slide is the timeline summary, which you could see the dates of how it will all come together.
My apologies, this is not as your packet. The software is messing up the formatting, so.
Don't worry about it.
So July of '22, we're looking at the hiring the golf course, are putting out the RFP. I'm having a little trouble reading it. October of '22, fiscal year '23, new enterprise fund begins. October of '22, as Teresa mentioned, hire the division director of golf operations. November of '22, issue food and beverage RFP. By June of '23, city assumes all operations. That's the one full year we talked about. June '23, food and beverage contract begins. Fiscal year '23, design capital improvements, as Laney mentioned earlier and Jennifer. And April through November of '24, phase one, capital construction to be complete by November of '24.
Okay. All right. Start at this end. Commissioner Torga, questions or comments?
Thank you. I'll just, I'll keep mine very brief. I appreciate the closing comments about this being a Donald Ross course. And I appreciate the concept that this is an asset, and I certainly want to, I certainly want to support that for the city of Dunedin. That's, everybody knows that, I think, so I don't need to say that any more than that. I think that's very, very important. I do, I did make some comments that may affect some of these other things. I don't want to get into that till I see more information. I really don't have enough to make comments about, but I realize if I don't, sometimes we go down the road and say, well, we had consensus about this. I would like to keep, really have us keep a very open mind about the other steps because we haven't seen them in detail, in detail. But I appreciate the commitment of going forward and making this a Donald Ross course. I think it makes perfect sense, and you got the board that has knowledge of what's being, of who the players are today. And those players are important to us, as far as, as far as particularly the locals, because they're the ones that are going to also enjoy this. But this golf course is really for the city of Dunedin, and that includes many assets from everything, from people that are visiting with us, or people that I'll have visit with me that now can play on our Donald Ross course. And it goes right on down the line, it's like everything else, just a tremendous asset. So I'm in full support of that side of it. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it, that's my comment. I really don't have any questions. I think I made those questions before. Thank you.
Commissioner? Is this questions or comments? Questions or comments? I mean, we're going to let everybody speak, too.
Yeah. No, I mean, I do have some questions about, I'm assuming the greens are just, we're expanding them beyond what's normally there now to make it fit more with what Donald Ross used to look like?
Yes.
That's basically it. So that's the difference. The tee is like, the tees are like, they've been built up and on top of each other over time. Now we're going to bring them down. In the fairways and practice areas, is that, again, just expanding it back to kind of more of an original?
Expanding the fairways, yes, and the practice, yes.
So, okay. And so, yeah, I mean, and as we go, I'll learn more about that. But I mean, my only comment is, obviously, I'm supportive of the direction we're going. Staff's done a lot of work, really appreciate it. The board has been great. Sounds like you're all working together well, which is awesome. I do agree, as much as I'm a believer in, you know, taking care of the clubhouse because it, you know, it looks dated to me, it's about golf. And so I think our first priority has to be the golf. And so I'm, I 100% agree with that. That's where we got to put our money first, because do the golf and they'll come. And the other stuff can follow, including, you know, clubhouse could wait until the next penny or something, or we can, you know, do something that maybe is more fitting in a renovation. So that's kind of my thoughts at this point.
Vice Mayor?
This is a real question, very simple. When you're doing the renovations, according to this thing, does, can the club stay open? I mean, it also closes down, too. When you're doing all the course stuff that you have to do, the irrigation, the tees, the-
Could the clubhouse continue to stay open?
Well, I'm just wondering. I don't know.
The clubhouse could continue to stay open. The course would be closed down.
Right, correct.
Unless, and we're not recommending this, but if you did nine holes at a time, you could keep nine holes open. We're not recommending that. We feel it needs to get done all at one time.
Mm-hmm. But the club could-
There's cost involved there, there's logistics involved there.
I understood that you want to do one time, close down to do the course. I was just curious.
That's been the recommendation of almost everyone that has spoken to out in the field.
And to leave the club open?
Clubhouse.
Clubhouse?
Yes.
Right, correct. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my only question would be, Vince, is within the plan, as far as irrigation, greens, trees, I have trees in there, and then trees and stump removal. And just to acknowledge that while I'm a big Hugh Donald Ross fan, we are a tree city, and I'd be very concerned that trees that are eliminated just to eliminate them.
If I may, and that's a really good point, and that's why in our PowerPoint, we have it in the spirit of Donald Ross, because there may be a grand oak that we don't agree with and, you know, those types of things, so.
So we are comfortable saying no?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Appreciate it.
Yes, no.
That was funny.
Yes, no.
There's it. Thank you.
Okay, and, you know. And I agree with what you had to say, Commissioner. As far as the priority of golf, I totally get that. I also see the benefit if there, as we price this stuff out and the grant and the other, there is clear benefit to trying to get the clubhouse in there as well. A, you attract a better food and beverage group, and they will have a say in it. When you shut down, it's all shut down at the same time. So when it opens back up, the anticipation of both things is a better tool to attract people. It's a better way to attract members when you have both done. It's more cost-efficient, energy-efficient, everything. When it, I say energy, I don't mean literal energy, I mean staff time energy. So, you know, I think, I think as we're looking at these costs, I think we have to keep that in mind. I'm not saying making a decision on that now. I think we all agree that the golf is, there's only so much money.
Yes.
I do not agree that it should wait to the next penny, I can tell you that. Absolutely not.
I'm just, I'm giving you the extreme.
Because it looks old. I know, but I'm just saying it looks old and dated, and while it may be not the number one- And while it may be not the number one revenue generator, it is somewhat of a decision maker for people who want to be around there. And I think the restaurant itself could be so much better, open to the public as far as attracting people. I think there's a lot of potential there and, and sales growth if it's done right. And so I don't want to throw that out either because, you know, of $500,000. That's what I'm trying to say. I want to be smart about this.
Yes.
Absolutely, the golf is important. So I'm not saying do it in place of, but I do think if we can figure out how to do it, or even if it was a partial upgrade, we're not talking, I mean, I'd rather see the interior done than the expansion of the porch, frankly. Not, I want to see both.
Right.
They're both important. But if we want to attract more weddings, if we want to have a, you know, seven day a week, and I don't know that's what it'll be, but seven day a week, nice restaurant where our residents will go, over and above what the golf club is using it for. It can't keep looking like that. It just can't. And, and we will not attract a food and beverage operator that will be worth what we want if we do leave it that way. So I just want to put that out there as far as stuff for all of you to think about. Okay, so we have 10 minutes, which is not a long time and I apologize for that. In order to, we've got folks that are, I'm sure, here to speak. We have to stop at five till. We can come back and people can continue to speak if they want to, but I have to let Nikki do her thing first. So come on up, whoever like to come.
Gary does.
Sure. There you go.
Good morning. My name is Gary Huffaker. I am the president of Dunedin Golf Club. Since last year, we have been meeting regularly with Jennifer Vince and on occasion, her entire staff to discuss transition of the golf course to a new management structure. These meetings have been productive and have provided mutual insights into the complexities of golf course operation and the big job of transitioning to city management from board management, renovating tired greens complexes and fairways, installing new admin systems, hiring a GM and so forth. I can say with confidence that the Dunedin Board of Directors and the city manager and her team want the same thing. A successful transition to a better golf course for the city's residents who will golf there for many years to come. The board of the Dunedin Golf Club agrees with the city's plans for going forward. Members of the club have voted at our recent annual meeting to support the concept of renovating the course to its original design intent. We also agree that a phased approach makes the most sense to such a complex undertaking. It's comparable, perhaps analogous, to rebuilding a ship at sea. So we endorse the city's plan as presented today. The Dunedin Board of Directors urges the commission to choose the option of deferring the outsourcing of food and beverage and clubhouse operations until after the golf course renovation is complete. We believe that changes to this part of the golf club operations will needlessly complicate and disrupt matters for golfers and city project leaders. Because of time constraints today, we'll send the commission a more detailed discussion of the reasons for taking a phased approach to the clubhouse operations and why we feel strongly about it. I will remind everyone today that the original impetus for changing current management of the golf course was due to a lack of capital funding for fixing numerous problems on the golf course. This required more city control since funding was going to come primarily from the city. But the decision to outsource the food and beverage operation has no such driver. The city is embarking on a long, complex project to hire a GM and renovate a golf course. The outsourcing of food and beverage at the same time is an undesirable complication that could upset many of the commission's constituents who live nearby and depend on the clubhouse restaurant for much of, most of their social life. As do the Dunedin business community, as Mr. Torga said, and nonprofit organizations who regularly hold their meetings and fundraisers there. The board urges the commission to choose the option to change clubhouse operations if necessary after the renovation is successfully completed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got time for maybe two more speakers before we have to adjourn. Anybody else wish to come forward? Okay, Jennifer. I think you all need to discuss all of that and come back and tell us how you feel about it because I think you've got various reasons why you're doing what you're doing and I'm sure you've shared that with the club.
Yes, yes, we have. And so, and we have to bring back a more full financial picture in regards to your budget as well. So we'll be doing, working on that over the summer.
Okay. All right. Any other final comments?
No, not at this time. I thank everybody for working together and I think, you know, obviously Gary brings up some interesting points, so I look forward to your thoughts on that and, but no, I mean, this is a good update and I feel good about the timeline that's set forward.
We'll, we'll most likely need to bring back the food and bev prior to.
Yeah, I was going to say, you'll be running your, against your timeline if you, you know, if you shift.
We need to discuss.
Anybody else?
Because of time, I'm fine. For what I said.
I submit.
Thank you, everybody, for all the hard work. Appreciate that. Let's take a little break, I, before we go out to the flag, we've got to.
That's important.
Otherwise I would have let another conversation happen, but.
I was going to say, yeah, we could have got one.
Um. Who are you doing first?
Because she's got to go.
That's fine.
Okey doke. Update, Nikki.
Okay, so I understood from the city manager that I had been asked to make some statements in regard to a suggestion at your workshop meeting that the city has some legal obligation to return $500,000 to the estate of Mr. Vanek for his contribution to the city in 1989. Again, I mentioned that my comments, I'm going to try to keep them brief, and that's because this is an entirely different situation than a one-off email from the prior city attorney's office making an opinion on something. This was a heavily regulated transaction where the city eventually did public offering statements, selling public bonds. So that means opinions were obtained about the validity of that transaction, not only from the city attorney's office as the issuer's counsel, but from bond counsel, from disclosure counsel, from the banks counsel and underwriting counsel, from the ratings counsel. And then the end result, as you know, where bonds were publicly offered and sold to support the project. Since that time, there's also been interlocal agreements with the county. There's a development agreement with the Jays that we are all familiar with. So it is not the same as taking an email and going, was Tom right? This was a heavily regulated transaction, and for me to give an opinion that it would unwind this transaction that also closed, you know, now more than 10 years ago, just is not founded. So there's no legal reason why the city has to do anything with the $500,000. Now, the policy decision behind what you all choose to do to recognize that generous contribution, all the many years, 28 years of recreational facilities that it provided to the city, any way that you all want to choose to recognize that is well within your policy and your elected official decision-making authority and your discretionary authority. But there is no legal reason why you would need to return the money to the estate. I'll just give you a little bit more of a dive that we did, because again, my role is not to come in and what we'll call Monday morning quarterback, a heavily regulated transaction where statements were given to the IRS. I mean, this is not just a, again, like I say, this is not just one email from the prior city attorney's office. But also, you know, I mean, the logic checks out. When estates give things, generally, they have to be accomplished within 21 years, otherwise they're void. Here you had 28. So, you know, I mean, even at a high level, I'm not seeing any, wasn't seeing any red flags that were saying, wow, I've got to call your bond counsel and say this whole transaction from 10 years ago is, it's not, I just, I don't know how to any more succinctly say, this isn't a legal issue. If you all want to choose how to recognize members of the community, you're well within your discretion to do that. But there's no legal reason to return the funds.
Okay. Questions for, questions or anything for Nikki? Or we lose her?
And I hope I can answer that, but I wasn't any of those people on that list that I just named, but they're certainly all a part of your transaction and marketing those bonds, tax exempt pursuant to IRS rules and regulations, so.
Okay. Any questions or?
No.
Well, that was a great summary. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think that's what we all felt. And, you know, it's difficult to hear someone insinuate that you've done something illegal or not justified or whatever. Do I think there's another way to offer honor Mr. Vanek? I think that sign that Vince is working on, you know, is going to be good and, you know.
Yeah, actually, Vince was just sharing that with me as we were coming inside from the pride celebration, that there was a monument sign planned, and certainly, all those things are appropriate public recognitions. But, you know, sometimes I just want to be sure you're clear on what's a legal requirement and what's really within your discretion to choose how you want to positively reflect that great impact that it undoubtedly had on the community.
Good. Okay. Anything else, Jennifer, there?
Nothing further, ma'am.
Thank you, and I'll turn to the city clerk. Who has an update?
Sorry, two things at once. Thank you. I just had actually two things rather quickly. One, as probably many of you are already aware, that during COVID, the Tampa Bay Times did go to a two-day-a-week circulation on Wednesdays and Sundays. And so during that time, it has been quite challenging, not just for the clerk's office, but for other departments, which, to make the deadlines for advertising, and we have made each and every one, but sometimes it is challenging. So during, I went to a clerk's luncheon, and we were actually discussing this as a group, and a few of them have already gone to skipping a meeting in between the first and second reading. So if there are any changes, because right now, I have to advertise before first reading, which isn't real, it's not the way it's supposed to be done. And so I took this to the department heads, actually, and then Jennifer and George and I met last Tuesday, I believe it was, and we also discussed it. And so going forward, what we're looking at doing is, as an example, on Thursday night, you'll be reading ordinance 22-18, so it will be on June 9th, and then the second reading will actually be July 14th. So if any changes or anything are made, I still have to.
That's going to be a problem for developers. That is going to be a huge problem.
There's no one in the queue right now in design review.
No, I get you, but I'm just saying, and especially like development agreements where they're trying to get through it so quickly or that, that's going to be problematic.
So you can't, you can't notice it?
No, she can, but then if there's a change, it's costing us money.
Correct, it's costing us.
Costing us if there's a change, if, only if.
And if I can make the change.
Right.
Because if it's already past the deadline, then, and so far, it hasn't been an issue, but I know, there was just one recently with Nikki, and I mean, literally at the, I mean, I had a 10 o'clock deadline, and the email went out at 9:58.
Does it have to be in the newspaper?
Yes.
Probably yes. So it can't be like.
Well, we're getting a weekly beacon.
It doesn't meet the.
No.
There's certain longevity requirements and others that we analyze to see if that would be an option. It wasn't yet. It could get there.
But they haven't met the longevity.
I just feel like that's going to be a problem.
And electronic doesn't count.
Well, electronic just doesn't really add anything right now, because you have to do a published ad that you're going to advertise electronically every single time.
Gotcha.
So.
It still has to be published.
Right.
Correct.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Because, you know, when we've been talking about doing certain things quicker, you know, how could we do it quicker, like the one, the one, the one thing we were able to reduce to one public, or the two, LPA and one commission versus two commission, but like even with an adjustment to the development agreement, we have to do two.
I think.
According to our code, and so if we're going to make this change, I think we need to look at that.
Well, yeah, we can look at all.
How we could reduce, whether it's a, you know, like a development agreement, maybe, not necessarily a building, but.
Well, one of the issues actually with design review is that when you all make comments, then the architect has to make modifications to the design, it's almost impossible for them to turn around and get it back to us enough time for us to review it and then schedule. And, you know, Rebecca's point is, we've already advertised it. So if we have to continue it, then we have to re-advertise it. And I think, Mayor, you know, respecting that comment, really where we struggle with is the development agreements. If we bake it into design review, it's not a problem. With the development agreements themselves, though, I do think that we need to bring back to you, and maybe, you know, we can talk about this further on Thursday, is amendments to the code pertaining to development agreements.
With the time, yeah, I don't think that necessarily has to be a two, because that's not a building.
Right.
It's simply giving you, you know, negotiation power and then coming back and reviewing it.
That particular item, the negotiation power, that's one, right?
Yeah, and then there's the, then there's the development agreement itself.
Right. And sometimes between first reading and second reading, though.
Yeah, there's a change.
You all have comments that need to, and it's really hard for both the developer and staff to turn it around within that particular timeframe. The, when Rebecca called this to our attention, I just thought it was standard operating procedure in Dunedin, in the previous two cities, we skipped a meeting for that specific reason, because it gives us time, you know, to make the amendments, make the changes, to meet with the developer if we have to. So, if I may, to address that comment, because when you bring it up, I'm like, yeah, that might be a problem, it really is that request to authorize, you know, and then the development agreement, first and second reading. So let us work on that if you can.
Yeah, because we were hoping that we could do that, when we remembered that we could only, we only had to have the one commission meeting if we all agree that there were no changes or no whatever, and when we did that, I don't remember what the project was.
Right, design review.
But we couldn't do that with the development agreement, because the law was not flexible, yeah. The law wasn't flexible.
Right, so that, actually, this is, we reviewed the code, this is an operational issue, so we can make these changes and really talk about, you know, as far as with the development agreement, how it is we treat that in and of itself. But for design review, I think it's really important, actually, that we do it this way.
Everybody okay?
May I ask just really, really quick, really short? What was the answer for everyone that you talked to? What was their answer to this problem?
This is, this is what they told me, and that's why I brought it back. They were skipping a meeting, and so that's why I brought it back to Jennifer, and then we brought, talked about it at the department head meeting, and then we had another meeting with George, because he went over it with his department. And so it's been a conversation for just about.
Yeah, let's take a look at the development agreement piece, so that we can at least.
I think that whole thing needs to be addressed.
Maybe they, maybe they have that answer of how they, maybe you can find out how they did this.
Yeah, with their codes probably different.
They didn't do it.
Yeah, we're talking about specifically ordinances.
Right.
And so this ordinance says it addresses the design, or it's giving the development agreement, you know, so we would need to talk about that.
So it's going to take three weeks, four weeks.
Four.
Four. Because instead of going the next Thursday, you can only do something by that Tuesday, so then you're going to go.
Um, who are you doing for?
Because she's got to do it.
Okey-dokey. Update, Nikki.
Okay, so I understood from the city manager that I have been asked to make some statements in regard to a suggestion at your workshop meeting that the city has some legal obligation to return $500,000 to the estate of Mr. Vanek for his contribution to the city in 1989. Again, I mentioned that my comments, I'm going to try to keep them brief, and that's because this is an entirely different situation than a one-off email from the prior city attorney's office making an opinion on something. This was a heavily regulated transaction where the city eventually did public offering statements, selling public bonds. So that means opinions were obtained about the validity of that transaction, not only from the city attorney's office as the issuer's counsel, but from bond counsel, from disclosure counsel, from the banks counsel and underwriting counsel, from the ratings counsel. And then the end result, as you know, where bonds were publicly offered and sold to support the project. Since that time, there's also been interlocal agreements with the county. There's a development agreement with the Jays that we are all familiar with. So it is not the same as taking an email and going, "Was Tom right?" This was a heavily regulated transaction, and for me to give an opinion that it would unwind this transaction that also closed, you know, now more than 10 years ago, just is not founded. So there's no legal reason why the city has to do anything with the $500,000. Now, the policy decision behind what you all choose to do to recognize that generous contribution, all the many years, the 28 years of recreational facilities that it provided to the city, any way that you all want to choose to recognize that is well within your policy and your elected official decision-making authority and your discretionary authority. But there is no legal reason why you would need to return the money to the estate. I'll just give you a little bit more of a dive that we did, because again, my role is not to come in and what we'll call Monday morning quarterback, a heavily regulated transaction where statements were given to the IRS. I mean, this is not just a, again, like I say, this is not just one email from the prior city attorney's office. But also, you know, I mean, the logic checks out. When estates give things, generally, they have to be accomplished within 21 years, otherwise they're void. Here you had 28. So, you know, I mean, even at a high level, I'm not seeing any, wasn't seeing any red flags that were saying, "Wow, I've got to call your bond counsel and say this whole transaction from 10 years ago is..." It's not, I just, I don't know how to any more succinctly say, "This isn't a legal issue." If you all want to choose how to recognize members of the community, you're well within your discretion to do that. But there's no legal reason to return the funds.
Okay. Questions for, questions or anything for Nikki before we lose her?
And I hope I can answer that, but I wasn't any of those people on that list that I just named. But they're certainly all a part of your transaction and marketing those bonds, tax-exempt pursuant to IRS rules and regulations, so.
Okay. Any questions or?
No.
Well, that was a great summary. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think that's what we all felt. And, you know, it's difficult to hear someone insinuate that you've done something illegal or not justified or whatever. Do I think there's another way to offer, honor Mr. Vanek? I think that sign that Vince is working on, you know, is going to be good and, you know.
Yeah, actually, Vince was just sharing that with me as we were coming inside from the pride celebration, that there was a monument sign planned. And certainly, all those things are appropriate public recognitions. But, you know, sometimes I just want to be sure you're clear on what's a legal requirement and what's really within your discretion to choose how you want to positively reflect that great impact that it undoubtedly had on the community.
Okay. Anything else, Jennifer, there?
Nothing further, ma'am.
Thank you, and I'll turn to the city clerk. Who has an update?
Sorry, two things at once. Thank you. I just had actually two things rather quickly. One, as probably many of you are already aware, that during COVID, the Tampa Bay Times did go to a two-day-a-week circulation on Wednesdays and Sundays. And so during that time, it has been quite challenging, not just for the clerk's office, but for other departments, which, to make the deadlines for advertising. And we have made each and every one. But sometimes it is challenging. So during, I went to a clerk's luncheon, and we were actually discussing this as a group. And a few of them have already gone to skipping a meeting in between the first and second reading. So if there are any changes, because right now, I have to advertise before first reading, which isn't real, is not the way it's supposed to be done. And so I took this to the department heads, actually, and then Jennifer and George and I met last Tuesday, I believe it was, and we also discussed it. And so going forward, what we're looking at doing is, as an example, on Thursday night, you'll be reading ordinance 22-18. So it will be on June 9th, and then the second reading will actually be July 14th. So if any changes or anything are made, I still have to...
That's going to be a problem for developers. That is going to be a huge problem.
There's no one in the queue right now in design review.
No, I get you. But I'm just saying, and especially like development agreements where they're trying to get through it so quickly or that, that's going to be problematic.
So you can't, you can't notice it?
No, she's, she can, but then if there's a change, it's costing us money.
Correct. It's costing us.
It's costing us if there's a change. It, only if.
And if I can make the change.
Right.
Because if it's already past the deadline, then, and so far, it hasn't been an issue. But I know, there was just one recently with Nikki, and I mean, literally at the, I mean, I had a 10 o'clock deadline, and the email went out at 9:58.
Does it have to be in the newspaper?
Yes.
I was. It can't be like...
Well, we're getting a weekly beacon.
It doesn't meet the...
No.
There's certain longevity requirements and others that we analyze to see if that would be an option. It wasn't yet. It could get there.
But they haven't met the longevity.
I just feel like that's going to be a problem.
And electronic doesn't count.
Well, electronic doesn't really add anything right now, because you have to do a published ad that you're going to advertise electronically every single time.
Gotcha.
So.
It still has to be published.
Right.
Correct.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Because, you know, when we've been talking about doing certain things quicker, you know, how could we do it quicker? Like, the one, the one, the one thing we were able to reduce to one public, or the two, LPA and one commission versus two commission. But like even with an adjustment to the development agreement, we have to do two.
I think.
According to our code. And so if we're going to make this change, I think we need to look at that.
Well, yeah, we can look at all.
How we could reduce, whether it's a, you know, like a development agreement, maybe. Not necessarily a building, but.
Well, one of the issues, actually, with, with design review is that when you all make comments, then the architect has to, has to make modifications to the design. It's almost impossible for them to turn around and get it back to us in enough time for us to review it and then schedule. And, you know, Rebecca's point is, we've already advertised it. So if we have to continue it, then we have to re-advertise it. And I think, Mayor, you know, respecting that comment, really where we struggle with is the development agreements. If we bake it into design review, it's not a problem. With the development agreements themselves, though, I, I do think that we need to bring back to you, and maybe, you know, we can talk about this further on Thursday, is amendments to the code pertaining to development agreements.
With the time, yeah. I don't think that necessarily has to be a two, because that's not a building.
Right.
It's simply giving you, you know, negotiation power and then coming back and reviewing it.
That, that particular item, the negotiation power, that's one, right?
Yeah. And then there's the, then there's the development agreement itself.
Right. And sometimes between first reading and second reading, though, you all have comments that need to, and it's really hard for both the developer and staff to turn it around within that particular timeframe. The, when Rebecca called this to our attention, I just thought it was standard operating procedure in Dunedin. In the previous two cities, we skipped a meeting for that specific reason, because it gives us time, you know, to make the amendments, make the changes, to, to meet with the developer if we have to. So, so if I may, to address that comment, because when you bring it up, I'm like, yeah, that, that might be a problem. It really is that request to authorize, you know, and then the development agreement, first and second reading. So let us work on that if you can.
Yeah, because we were hoping that we could do that when we remembered that we could only, we only had to have the one commission meeting if we all agree that there were no changes or no whatever. And when we did that, I don't remember what the project was.
Right, design review.
But we couldn't do that with the development agreement, because the law was not flexible. Yeah. The law wasn't flexible.
Right. We can still, actually, this is, we reviewed the code, this is an operational issue. So we, we can make these changes and really talk about, you know, as far as with the, with the development agreement, how it is we treat that in and of itself. But for design review, I think it's really important, actually, that we do it this way.
Everybody okay?
Yeah, may I ask just really, really quick, really short? What was the answer for everyone that you talked to? What was their answer to this problem?
This is, this is what they told me, and that's why I brought it back. They were skipping a meeting. And so that's why I brought it back to Jennifer, and then we brought, talked about it at the department head meeting, and then we had another meeting with George, because he went over it with his department. And so it's, it's been a conversation for just about...
Yeah, let's, let's take a look at the development agreement piece, so that we can at least address.
I think that whole thing needs to be addressed.
Maybe they, maybe they have that answer of how they, maybe you could find out how they did this.
Yeah, with their codes probably different.
They didn't do it.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about specifically ordinances.
Right.
Right. And so this ordinance says it addresses the design, or it's giving the development agreement, you know, so we would need to talk about that.
So, so it's going to take three weeks, four weeks.
Four.
Four. Four. Because instead of going the next Thursday, you can only do something by that Tuesday. So then you're going to go from, say, the 9th to the 30th.
14th.
The 14th, right. So first, in this case.
Yep.
Okay. So you're going to put it on a workshop?
No.
It would still be on the Thursday.
It's just going to, if it's done at the beginning of June, it'll be at the beginning of July or whatever it is.
So the 30th. That's what I'm saying. That's four weeks.
We're skipping a meeting, though.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, basically skipping one meeting.
I got you. My brain is not working. For Thursday night, though, does that mean the vehicle thing is going to get skipped a meeting, but the development agreement is not?
No, the development agreement is going to have to, right now, it requires two.
It's already on a critical path and it's...
Yeah, we're not going to mess with that, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Just want to make sure of that.
But the vehicle, correct, is what I have.
Okay, we'll skip the, for the vehicle, but we're going to go ahead and hear the development agreement when, the following meeting.
There won't be a skipping.
The 20...
The 23rd.
23rd.
Yeah, it would not be the time to make that change.
I got you.
No, 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 no.
That would not work.
And the other thing?
The other item I had is during the last election cycle, every once in a while, I would just update on the current candidates that have pulled their paperwork. And so right now, we have two candidates for seat two, Stephanie Joines and Robert Walker. And then we have two candidates for seat four, which would be Commissioner Jeff Gao and Jeffrey Michael Miller. And so just, every once in a while, I'll just give you if there's any changes. And that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So city manager update? Anything? Okay. How about commission comments, since we only have five minutes, which is our liaison stuff. So I'll start with Vice Mayor.
Yes, I do want to say that Teresa, I think she just left, but we did work with the, through HPAK, and then we sat down in a meeting. And it's going to be very nice. It's a site marker that we will be putting up at Eli's. And we think that we've got it ordered to come in the 15th. If so, it can be included in your in-service day.
Yes.
And if not, you have the thing, you have the celebration at Pioneer Park, and they can tell people about it and to go see it. And, yeah. It's very nice.
Okay. Anything from your liaison positions, Commissioner Gao?
I just wanted to acknowledge that we have a new Dunedin Middle School principal, and that his name is Brandon Glenn. He comes from...
From the middle school?
Middle School in Hillsborough County. And he is a Dunedin High School alumni.
Oh, nice. So he knows the drill.
Yeah.
Wow.
Hopefully.
He knows something not to mess with.
Do you know where he came from in Hillsborough?
Uh, da-da-da-da-da-da.
I'm just curious.
No, just a middle school in Hillsborough County.
Okay. Commissioner?
Well, obviously, we have Pride Week coming up, and so hopefully, you've all had a chance to think about what you will go to. I'm going to talk to Andrea right after that. She'll touch base with you, because the goal is to have somebody, some representation at every event. And there's, there's quite a few events, including like some short films at the Scottish American Society on Wednesday night. That's like a technically a half hour long. And there's something in Ha New Before and something after Caledonia. But I think the short film thing is the, is one of the biggies. And, and also at our Hail Senior Activities Center, there's a screening of a silent, it's a film documentary. And so I think it'd be nice for one of us to be there, too. So think about that. It's on your calendars. Andrea will call you, so you can, you can say what you will obligate to go to. And when I see gaps, then I'll call you directly.
Okay.
And, and other than that, there is on Friday, June 10th, this Friday, 6:00 p.m., Crown and Bowl, a media event. And Gregory would love all of us to be there if we can. And John, I think you're the only one I didn't catch about, you know, checking on you, but...
Set up for an Honor Flight for the orientation.
Okay, you got your Honor Flight. Okay, so I think everybody else is going to be...
I'll come, when I come, you tell me where you're going to be and if I...
We're going to be at Crown and Bowl, starting at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, so before we're done, if we're done, I'll come back.
Yeah, stop over. That sounds great. So, no, you're doing good stuff over there. So, okay, good. So mark your calendars and be there, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Commissioner?
If it pleases the Commissioner, I'm at adjourned meeting.
Well, I do want to just let everybody know, I mean, I'm speaking for Commissioner Franny. We all did just, a lot, a number of us just came back, a huge chamber group from Toronto. And it was a great trip. They were celebrating pride, the Blue Jays, and it was very impressive, all the different things that, that they did. We got to meet a lot of the Blue Jays, just everyday employees.
Leadership team.
Leadership team up there that we had not met. We got to meet the TD Bank executive. Charlie was there. It was nice. So we got to do a lot of different Torontonian types of things. But the highlight, which is completely on our own time, is we, we went to dinner Saturday night. We went to a comedy club, Second City Comedy Club in Toronto. And, you know, they pick on somebody in the office, and then they...
In the audience.
In the, sorry, in the audience. And they do a skit about them based on that person's answers to certain questions. And they picked Mo. And so in the end, we were all saying, "All hail Mo." So when you keep hearing us say, "All hail Mo," it's because they did a whole song about "All hail Mo."
I was the chosen one.
She was the chosen one. She had, she had to wear giraffe, you're in charge of getting our giraffe ears.
No, I was not.
No, you're, no, you're in charge of ordering them on Amazon, so that we can do, so that we...
Oh, great.
Oh, it is? Oh, good.
Great.
Because "All hail Mo," we will be doing this forever. It was his, it was 30 minutes of grilling her on questions, and they took all her answers.
And worked it into a...
And worked it into a whole skit.
It was...
It was hysterical.
Very creative. I mean, they were amazing.
Yeah, it was funny.
Yeah.
It was hilarious.
So, anyway, that's not what our trip was about, but it was funny.
Is there video we want to see? Is there?
Yeah, no, it's all, it's all good, clean.
Yeah, it was, it was nothing, you know.
It was wonderful.
It was very good. And it was a good trip, and I'm glad we got to go. I think they were very pleased. You know, some of the things were shut down from our access at the stadium just because of COVID protocols. It's still, but no, it was, it was a good trip. I'm glad we went. I think we showed them, you know, since a majority of us were there, it made a nice statement, plus all the people that the chamber brought up on their own dime. You know, I think they were very impressed by that.
The most important thing that happened is on the giant Blue Jays jumbo tram during a major league game, they honored Deborah Kynes, Vice Mayor Kynes, for all she's done for Dunedin as part of her last hurrah.
Oh, thank you.
So, yes, so it was just a good, all-around...
It was magnificent.
And I will, I will...
Relationship trip.
I, I will, I have not done it yet. I actually started to do it. But I will be doing a nice thank you to specifically Mark and Shelby.
Yeah, please.
For that, and, or I was going to ask you who I should write.
Yeah, I think for that, for the jumbo thing, I mean...
Should be Mark and...
Shelby's was the one that really made that difference.
Well, and we should absolutely send a thank you to the chamber as well.
Yep.
I mean, they did all that work they did.
Yep.
So, anyway, that's it. All right. We are adjourned. Thank you. On time. I didn't think that was going to happen.
I know. I love it. Nikki, I need you for today.